This is a zoning board meeting of September 13, 2022. My name is Marty Aitkenz, I'm the chairman. Board members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Hemmle, Mr. Chan, and Mr. Franco. Mr. Conlon is here for inspectional services. And our assistant clerk, Kathy Noonan. And before we start, I'd like to, Kathy's gonna be our new clerk. Norine Murphy resigned for another job. And now, her last meeting was her last day here with us. And she did quite a job for almost 20 years I've been here. With that, could I have a motion for Kathy Noonan for clerk?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to make Kathy Noonan the permanent zoning board clerk.
Second it? Second it?
John.
On the motion, seeing that all in favor? Aye. All right, closed, so I'm over. Congratulations. Under our business tonight, ZBA 21-71, attorney Patrick Foley for variances, demolition, existing single-family home, build a new two-family home, style on the premises number 49 Shea Street. Counselor, you're up.
Congratulations, Mr. Noonan. Yeah, hope you had 20 years. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley, and I'm here representing 49 Shea Street tonight. I'm joined here tonight by Dave Rose, who's our architect for the project. We were before you about two weeks ago, we gave our presentation, and the landlord next door wrote a letter, you know, asking us to come back tonight and re-present, and we vote on it tonight, so here we are. I just want to hit home on a couple points that I made two weeks ago, about all the changes that we did make to the project after our community meeting about a year ago. And the reason it took us a year to have, you know, because we kicked around six, seven different drawings internally, to try to get this thing writers, to work with what the neighbors wanted. So what we did change was the rear setback went from 14 feet to 21 feet. The building footprint, we shrunk that from .75 to .69. The building height was reduced a foot. The raised deck in the backyard, we got rid of, we made it a patio at ground level. The building has sloped roofs now, which actually fit more with the neighborhood. We got rid of that whole boxy look that we had originally. I know this was not a popular mode of the neighborhood, with the 550-foot square foot roof deck, we got rid of that, that was open air. We cut that in half, we made it 235 square feet, and we enclosed the whole thing. I just also want to address too, there was a sketch floating around online, and Dave's gonna talk about it a little bit more, that kind of distorted what the applicant is looking to do here tonight. I'll let him discuss that, and also kind of walk through some of the plans as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, David Rose, 2262 S. White, Nathan's floor.
Thank you.
The drawing that was sent around, it would be like a rendering, but it was showing a stockade fence in the front, and then the house kind of blown up out of proportion of what was around it. And that's not what we're trying to do. We have the entire front landscape, we'll add trees, we'll do as many trees as anybody wants to, as many as we can. So the way they made it look is kind of presenting a, you know, distorted appearance of the building, in scale and execution, lack of landscape, the stockade fence, which we're not planning on using anywhere on the entire property.
Hey, everybody, come on, quiet down, please.
And, I don't know if you want me to walk through the plans.
She do it quick, yeah.
Yeah.
We all ready.
Yes, it's a two-family, side-by-side townhouse style, two bedrooms. As Patrick knows, we lowered the height a bit, but the roof deck is now 235 square feet, I think, and it's within the roofing, so you don't have any idea there's one up there, because it's set down into the roof, so it's kind of closed by roofing into it. You would never see it. And, yeah, the actual level is living space, the upper level has the bedrooms, and the basement has the exercise room. And, let's see, that's a blow up for the first floor, showing the living space and the bathroom. Second floor has two bedrooms, bathroom.
Mr. Chair, there's one change, we dropped the bedroom in each unit, there are three bedrooms we went down to.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I'm here to answer questions, concerns.
Any questions in the board?
No, no questions, fine. No questions.
Can you just have a rendering of the exterior property?
Oh, yeah, it's an elevation.
And what's the height now?
Tallest part are the stairs, which are 28 feet, but the main part of the building, you know, the two-story part, is 24 off a grade, 24 foot five off a grade.
Thanks.
You can have a seat, Counselor.
And the house is vacant right now, it's gonna be owner occupied.
And both of those units owners?
What's that?
Both of the units owners?
It's gonna be, his business partner's gonna be looking there, yes.
Okay. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call, call the meeting correspondents, none? Is that new? No, not obvious.
Marty Aitkenz, Chairman of Zoning Board of Appeals from Chung Sang, Civil Engineer Senior, September 9, 2021, 49 Shea Street, case number ZBA 21-71. We repudiate the submitted for the above referenced project, and our comment is as follows. One, specify how much of previous area will be increased due to the development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility, graining, grading, drainage, and construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, provide dimensions and grades for paving areas in all driveway entrances. And five, Shea Street is proposed to be repaved in 2020, 2021 and 2022. There was a five-year moratorium for any digging on the new paved street. Further information, please advise.
If you call it by the hand and close, is there anyone opposed to run aside, step up, state your name, address for the record, please.
I have some boards to show, can I?
Name and address.
Oh, sure. My name is Nathaniel Wales. My address is 45 Gladstone Street in Quincy, Massachusetts, and I'm the property owner of 78 Baxter Ave, direct of butter to this project.
Very good.
Is it okay if I show some boards here? I'm here before the board to state my opposition to the plans submitted by the developer, Quincy Oz Properties 1 LLC, a company whose certificate of origin states that it is for, quote, "the purposes of real estate investment," and the owner of which is the main signatory on at least six other real estate investment LLCs. For months, the board has been granting continuances based on the developer's statement that they, quote, "needed more time to work on new plans and meet with neighbors for a second time." At the last meeting on August 23rd, the applicant presented new plans to the board, and seemed to suggest that they'd addressed all of our concerns, but the neighbors never saw these plans. It has been nearly a year, and the applicant still has not actually met the board's demands, original ask to meet with and present new plans to the neighborhood before coming back to the board. So this is my first opportunity to review and provide feedback on modified plans. The submitted application does not provide an accurate list of variances sought, but by my count, the new plans still violate eight different zoning ordinances. I will keep this as brief as possible, but my, most of my previous objections from the last meeting still remain relevant with these modified plans. So the first thing I want to talk about is the side setback. This is an improvement at 21 feet. My property is right here, I'm an direct of butter to this lot line, so that's very important to me. It was originally at 14 feet, it is now at 21 feet. This is frustrating, because I think had we been able to meet with the developer, we could have an easy win here. You'll recall that the RESB requirements require 25 feet of rear setback. And if you look at the plans, we have 37 and 6 inches, or whatever it is, for front setback. There is absolutely no reason, in fact, there's 10 feet by my measurement, from this house to the driveway. And there's absolutely no reason this house could not be slid forward four feet, seems like such an easy win. And for me, this would go a long way to making some of these other variances a little more palatable, because that's such an important factor for us.
You want the house moved forward?
Yeah, four feet. No, it's not the only thing I'm asking for, but that's like such an easy thing to do.
Right, I just want to get it right.
There's an error on the plans, too, I'd like to call out, the side setback error. They have, first of all, I want to acknowledge the reduction of the patio to ground level, that's a huge improvement, because before it was raised, and it was like right up against our house, people were like looking into our house. And so that's an improvement, the side setback at 14 feet 6 inches is inaccurate, it should be 10 feet 1 inch, because these rear steps are over four feet tall. And according to zoning ordinance 4.3.3, those should be included in the setback. So I'm requesting that the plans be updated with that, because I think the board should vote on accurate plans. Roof deck, it's been a big issue, I'll actually just put this up here so you can see it. The applicant is really seeking to add a fourth story to this building. It has a stairwell with 1, 2, 3, 4 stories. This stairwell is covered, provides access to an outdoor livable space that includes what looks like a sink, a grill, and outdoor living spaces, bringing people up to the fourth level. And RESB only allows for three, so I'm arguing that that's a variance required, too. Finally, the stair towers, those two massive towers that require access to get to the roof deck, they're not, the height is not on the plans anywhere. What an important number that is, the building height, yet it's omitted on the plans completely. It's actually 4.5 plus 29, 33.5 feet to here, by my takeoffs, it's over 35 feet tall. I think at the last meeting, the board actually asked the applicant to add the building height, that's still not there, that's omitted. I also request that that be added, because the board should vote on complete plans. The developer claims that they have a, quote, "fully enclosed" roof deck. As you see from this diagram, it's not really fully enclosed at all, and in fact, what they're proposing doesn't really change anything at all. The only privacy or blind spot it creates is for the two units of their own property, and it has no effect on adjoining neighbors at all. So all of our previous claims, all of our previous concerns still apply. There are no other buildings in the Mount Street Beach neighborhood that have roof decks. This would be a very bad precedent for the Mount Street Beach neighborhood and residential Quincy neighborhoods all over. Would every building, if a board approves this, now come before the board, include a roof deck design? And if so, would the board approve all of those? I've spoken with a lot of my neighbors, and this roof deck is a big concern, and they all share one common sentiment that really boils down to, we don't want this to turn into South Boston. My next point is about the driveway. The developer wants to build two units. In order to support two units, they need four parking spaces. There's no way you can work these plans to do anything other than take over the front yard with a parking lot for four cars, paved from edge to edge. And this is way out of line with the zoning variance, the zoning ordinance 5.1.4, which says for residence B, it cannot be greater than 20 feet wide, and it must be set back three feet on each side. This requested variance is not in the application anywhere that I can see. This is an eyesore that would change the character, entire character of this neighborhood. It would create one big expansive driveway front connected across three lots. It would extend for 125 feet and consume 60% of Shea Street between Silver Street and Baxter Ave. It would cut down one mature tree, a city shade tree, and rip up a brand-new city sidewalk. I have two major safety concerns here that I think need to be addressed. First, this is a family neighborhood with lots of foot traffic, kids riding bikes, people walking their pets, people going down to the beach, and they would now encounter an unbroken wall of fenders, and the hazards of cars pulling in and out between tight spaces without a lot of visibility into a busy street. Second, this is very important, I believe, access to the building is entirely through that driveway. You have a fence on each side, and the plans show four cars, I measured them, they're all 73 inches wide. These are old cars, they don't even have side mirrors. They're not the same as larger, modern parts, SUVs, truck vans, that average out at about 82 inches. The impact of this utility pole is not properly addressed here. You'll see it right here, set in a few feet from that property line. The plans show it on a curb, it's like right in the middle of the actual granite of the curb cut. And by the time you factor that in, you really have only about a, by my measurement, 39-foot width driveway to work with. So now you have four, if you put four new cars in there with more realistic widths, and you account for that driveway, the space between those cars, if they're perfectly parked, is about two and a half feet. There's no bikes in the driveway, snow on the edges, people not parking perfectly. That's a safety hazard that concerns me. How will EMT people trying to respond to emergency pull a stretcher out of that house? How can firefighters get access to that house? Are they gonna have to shimmy between cars or hurdle over fences? What if there's a fire for one of the cars? How will people evacuate? And then, simple things, what about package deliveries? Where are they gonna put large packages? Where are you gonna put all the snow? What's happening right now, it's on the other side of the street, and it's already causing problems, now there's gonna be four more cars and another driveway, no place to put Trash cans, too, small detail, but where are they gonna put their trash cans? They're gonna block their own driveway? They're gonna block the neighbor's driveway? Or they're gonna put it in the sidewalk and have people force it into the street? Final point. And yes, this is the picture that's been going around. I did not make this picture, a neighbor did, and she acknowledges that it's a very hasty rendering, but it's the best we have to try to show what this building actually might be like. It's not supposed to be a realistic rendering, we all understand that. It's just showing an eyeball feel for the size of that building in the neighborhood. And I want to give credit to her, Lori, from Silver Street, one of my neighbors. And this multi-family building is just too large in scale and placement and the design to fit in this neighborhood. They are requesting an FAR of 0.69. This still exceeds the bulk max size for RESB by 75%, and it just goes to show how oversized those original plans were. I think there's a strategy by developers to come in with a big ask and try to compromise down, but this is not a fair compromise. This is still a bad deal for the neighborhood. Zoning ordinances belong to the community they protect, and this applicant has shown no hardship. It's missing entirely from the application. Requirements stated specifically in section 7 C and D of the zoning application requirements, I'm not gonna read them now, but you know that they have to have a hardship, and that's just missing. The proposed project does have a significant negative impact on the abutting properties and the neighborhood. Most of these are ultimately due to the need to support two units. There is no requirement to construct two units, nor is there for a roof deck. Desire for financial gain is not a considered hardship. I'm against the, I am for the responsible development of this property, and I regret that the developer did not present the modified plans to the neighborhoods first, as originally requested by the board. I would genuinely like to see this through for reasonable design. But this board should not vote yes on a project submitted with an incomplete application, inaccurate variance requests, and plans submitted with obvious mistakes and omissions. This board should not vote yes on a project where the developer has not followed the board's own instructions to present new plans and work with the neighbors. The board should not vote yes on a project that shows no hardship and is fully rejected by abutting property owners, the neighbors, and the Ward 2 counselor. If the zoning ordinances are not applied in these circumstances, in what circumstances would they be upheld? If the board approves the zoning appeal with no valid hardship and complete community opposition, they are basically nullifying our RESB zoning variances. This proposed building would be a blatant example of a poorly planned development in our city, and I am strongly urging the board to vote against this variance appeal. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else opposed on the side, come on up? Anyone? Come on, let's go. We've got 12 cases tonight. Name and address for the record, please.
My name, can you all hear me? My name is Bill LaRaya. I live at 802 Southern Avenue. My family has lived in this neighborhood well over a century, and I want to applaud my neighbor for giving an excellent presentation about this project. This project does not deserve to be in our neighborhood. It's a boat that's damp, flat, it's very small. Now, as far as architecture and all of that, that's not me. I'm a retired firefighter, and what he told you is correct. When you have four cars, a lot, if there's a fire in that building, everything has to be new, all old ladders, it's made in accessible. That had to be taken into consideration. And so I, you know, that you realize that this project did not be in there at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ware. Is there anyone else opposed on the side, if we step forward? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michelle Connolly, 32 Ompetuck Road. Good evening, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and members of the audience, thank you for coming out tonight. I am definitely in opposition of the development plans for 49 Shea Street. From my perspective, I see this as a numbers game, but not from a financial standpoint, which is what I'm going to explain this evening. The developers of this property have requested an excessive amount of variance to build a two-family townhouse-style home. The process began on September 28, 2021, nearly a year ago. From that date until today, there have been eight appearances or non-appearances in front of the ZBA. As stated previously, many the times, the developers said they just need more time for the plans. The inability of the developers to have the plans ready to discuss eight times is an outrageous waste of time for the city and all involved. The developer has not defined or explained what the hardship is in asking for variances. Developers, please conform to the table of dimension, dimensional requirements and stop asking for more than what you want. You can build a beautiful building and/or structure.
Speak to the board, please.
You can build a beautiful structure and stay within the confines of the zoning laws. It will be a win-win for the residents of Quincy. Thank you for your time.
Oh, I'm Emily Pan, 80 Baxter. Thank you to the board and everyone in attendance for your time, and I'm here to voice my opposition toward the construction proposal regarding 49 Shea. So firstly, I would like you, I would urge you to remember what makes Quincy, Massachusetts special. Quincy is truly a quaint New England town. Multicolored, single, and two-family colonial homes line that short little walk to the beach. The area around my home is truly a haven for us families that desire a quieter life, away from, but not completely removed, from the bustle of Boston City proper. When my family purchased our home, I was still in middle school. I dreamed of being a city girl, but after a few years living in Los Angeles, I yearned for the serenity of home. When I remembered home, it was home in Quincy. It was that golden sun rising over the bay, with its rays filtering through that light foliage, that truly made me fall in love with living here. It was the picturesqueness of the area, where a walk in the neighborhood sometimes felt more like a dream than exercise. Clearly, I was not the only one to acknowledge this beauty. My home was chosen to be the set of numerous films and lots of newspaper articles, as with the entire neighborhood. And this home is where I see myself in a decade or more, and hopefully one day, growing a family and retiring just as those families before me. These words really shouldn't be taken lightly, especially from me. At my young age, it's nearly impossible to say anything about the future, but something about this feels so incredibly certain. This new multi-family building would hurt our local community in three primary ways. Firstly, us, the neighbors of this building proposition, were not aware of these modified plans. It was only until another property owner informed us of this unforeseen change. This action sets the precedence that the community in this area is not important to those who propose this construction. It wasn't important that us, the people living here, and will continue to live here for decades to come, are up to date with these plans, but rather, their own agenda was pushed at our sake. This is truly a respectful move to fragment the relationships in the area that make our neighborhoods so friendly. Furthermore, my home, as well as the other homes in this area, are vital components to the history of Quincy. Many of these homes have well surpassed a century on, and most homes are rearing up around that 100-year mark as well. In this neighborhood, numerous films, important people, events have occurred here. The coastal New England-ness is truly a hallmark of this area. The construction of a multi-family building would stick out like a sore thumb, eventually shattering the decades and centuries of history that we have. Lastly, as I mentioned before, the natural beauty of Quincy is one of the greatest incentives for people of all types to move and settle here. With the construction of a multi-story home, not only will it disrupt the visual beauty of the area, but it will also have profound changes that might be less obvious. Tall buildings shade out buildings around it, thus decreasing the value of the homes around it. Perhaps on paper you may discount this, but I do encourage you to remember what makes living here so special. Even I, living in Los Angeles, where the sun is ever-present, miss that Quincy sun. Furthermore, people genuinely come to, like, travel to see the beachside neighborhood. It's an aesthetic that people go out of their way to travel and see.
All right, if you can wrap it up, man, talk about the project.
The disruption of this will lead to the aesthetic being ruined and lose its demographic to visitors, of visitors to Quincy. Another effect of this multi-story home is ecological damage. Massachusetts is home to millions of unique plants and animals, and the native greenery is unmistakable. Just peering out the window, you'll see millions of little critters and different.
Wrap it up, ma'am. Talk about the private, and the things that are important to this private, not the whole city of Quincy.
The construction of a large, multi-story home.
What don't you like, that's why you're up here, report it. Also, what you don't like about the project, please. There's many people gonna speak tonight. You should have two minutes, you shouldn't have 12 minutes, please.
I implore you to include these considerations in your further deliberations, and I appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you. Anyone else, poser on the side? Trying to keep it to a couple minutes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Yeah, I strongly oppose this proposal.
Name, name and address.
My name is King, I live in 80 Baxter Avenue.
80?
80, yes. I'm strongly opposed this, this project, because I'm living here for seven years, I know a lot of neighbors living here for decades, maybe some of them are more than 50 years. This is a well-established neighborhood here. So all the properties, houses are similar, like, we have a big yard, we have a small houses, but this one comes here, doesn't fit this culture here. This is a unique culture here, and also, we have, this will create a lot of hazard, like, safety hazard, because I know this neighbor very well, so people walk with the kids, walk with dogs, and so this really crowded. This is like a big building in a small yard, so this is totally not fit for this culture.
We hear you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Richard Ash, property owner, 12 and 14 Mountain Street, I'm also attorney and the president of the Ward 2 Civic Association. I will keep this short. While I would love to see some development on Shea Street, I know that house has been vacant for a while, it's overgrown, I know, I've talked to a lot of my neighbors, we would certainly appreciate a renovated or revamped single-family. Two-family seems too big, too big a footprint for this, and if we are gonna consider a two-family, I would at least ask to concede completely on the roof deck and look at better plans for parking. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
John Norfield, 62 Grand Mall Road, it'd be really quick. The only thing I like about this project is Attorney Foley, who I think did a very good job presenting a very bad project, okay? The only thing I like about this project is Attorney Foley, who I think did a very good job presenting a very bad project, okay? He made it sound like, okay. But the reality is, this, you know, I've seen over 100, actually, I think I've seen over 1,000 projects. The city of Quincy has approved many bad projects, but if you approve this one, this will be one of the worst ones you ever approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Anyone else posing on the side, council?
First of all, I'd like to thank the board for holding off on having this so the neighbors were able to come out and speak. I also want to ask, did you receive a letter from Councilor Andronico?
Yep, right here.
Okay, he had, he sent it to me to read it into the record, he would like to have that read into the record.
Yeah, you can if you'd like.
Okay, I will be happy to do that. So this is.
Have it right here, go on here, bigger. Might be easier.
Front page, please. Dear members of the zoning board, I regret that I'm unable to join the neighbors, join you at the meeting tonight due to prior commitment. However, I did want to make a brief statement regarding the proposal before you at 49 Shea Street. First, I'd like to express my thanks for you, for your extension to ensure that the neighborhood was afforded proper time to comment. As you are aware, the original proposal for 49 Shea Street came before the board last fall in 2021. After presenting the initial plans to the board, ownership came to me and asked that they would be, they would hold a community meeting to help find a middle ground for the proposal with the neighborhood. I put together a virtual community meeting on Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, that was well-attended. Ownership then went back to the drawing board and submitted new plans to ZBA over the summer. After reviewing the new plans, I did not feel the second community meeting would be productive for the neighborhood or ownership and felt it would make more sense to go straight to ZBA. Additionally, I wanted to note that the letters that have been sent to the residents on Baxter F., Moore Street, Mountain Street, Shea Street, Silver Street, and parts of Southern Artery for the meeting and the aforementioned meetings. In any case, I would like to make this clear, that I'm 100% against this project. To date, I have received more than a dozen written correspondence, not including the petition with 30 names of local residents on it, opposed to the development, with only one in favor. To summarize, to summarize and echo the sentiments of those who have written and opposed for this project. Development itself is too large for a lot, and the proposal still includes a roof deck, even though the neighborhood made it explicitly clear that this, that this, that this ran counter to the community values, and the proposal still does not fit within the character of the neighborhood. For those reasons, I respectfully ask that the board vote to reject this proposal. Sincerely, Anthony Andronico, War Two, Councilor and of City of Quincy. So I just wanted to read that in. At the last meeting, you asked me where.
That's the only one I have, I got to put in the record.
Yep, I'll give it back to you. So the only, at the last meeting, you asked if Councilor Andronico was for or against it. He said that he'd written a letter then too, but I don't know if it got in. It's certainly, it's certainly okay. But more importantly, what I wanted to make sure that we make note is that we thank, that we thank the board that we postponed this, that the neighborhood was able to have that commitment. I thank the neighborhood for getting together and coming out. And I think, as they said before, they're interested in having something done there, but not this. This is just too big. So thank you very much.
Thank you, council. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else posing on the side? Second call. Third call closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you can come up for one second. I just want a few comments here. This looks like a square box with. I won't say it, what's on top, but, you know, let's design a house like, like you heard tonight. What people like. I love the idea of a two-bedroom. Love the idea of, love the idea of two floors, basement down there. My opinion, get rid of the roof deck. You got two two-bedrooms, two-family. And I thought we talked about pavings. I thought the whole driveway was going to be pavings.
We don't have any Quincy idea of what the driving was going to be, or.
Well, it ain't going to be asphalt, right?
Yeah, I mean, we can use grass paved, we can use whatever to soften the look of the.
Something to go down, let the water to go through.
Yeah, yeah.
That's mine.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, again, I.
We get rid of the roof deck, we can increase the rear setback four feet.
Yep, that'd be great. And wait a minute, wait a minute, council.
I think, I think the neighbors express themselves. I think you're blacking out the wrong tree, like. I think you got to be a little smaller in height and a little more.
Designed.
Designed with the neighborhood.
There's a couple, in the presentations, the wheels, there's a couple facts that you just want to correct, just to get that off on the record.
Yeah, the trash storage is actually shown on the.
Yep.
On the site plan. The setback on the existing building is 2.5 feet. And the proposed building, although you pointed out that it should be to the stair, would still be four times what the existing setback is.
Right.
So it's drastically improving it. Tree, again, we can plant, replace the tree that we're going to take down that's in the middle of the driveway, the driveway. And we can, and we can put in entries, you know, that's not.
I think the boxing is, this thing is like boxing with two mountains on top, it's like. So if you get rid of that, you get rid of the deck, I think you get rid of those things and do something a little, make it look like Massachusetts. Make it look like one of those guys out there would like, that are buried out there. You know what I mean?
The last one to, I think, is from 80 Baxter, that this house has been in our family for almost 20 years. So it's not like somebody coming in, trying to turn it to self-love.
No, we get it. We get it. We listened to the whole thing, we saw the whole thing, and we saw where you went, where you came. I think they just wanted to make a look. I got a half of one of those across the street from me. I look at it every day, I freak out, so. It's a square box. It's the ugliest thing I've ever seen. And you wanted to put a 45-foot roof down. So I would look, be like looking at a garage, back of a garage. Like, make your house look like New England, thump, just thump. You know what I mean? A little color, a little less, little designs, I mean, what are you going to spend on that? You could build a really nice house, I think, really nice, with two bedrooms each.
But I just want to reiterate.
I know, and I get that. I just want the board first to speak, and then we'll let you, council.
Well, I think you're lucky in the fact that you've got a neighborhood that's involved, a neighborhood that knows something's going to come in there. So try to make them happy.
Yeah, I would reiterate that, maybe come back with something that bars less, fewer variances. You don't have to make it look like New England, like.
A little bit, come on, come on. Windows, yeah.
More expensive than that, however.
Light up top.
You understand that you're going to be with neighbors that are going to, you want to coexist with. So be sure you can come up with something more conducive to that.
And Councilor Andronico addressed the other thing I wanted to address, which is that we're not trying to, you know, eliminate discussion with the.
No. He said, yeah, he said no because of the way.
Yeah, he's the one that told us.
So we, we figured that out too.
Even though, even though he's against it, he's been phenomenal at work with that people. It's been a constant communication, I mean, you've done a great job.
Keep working.
Yeah. So if I didn't get their contacts, then I'll reach out more to who has these concerns and I can share with them what it's like on doing. But I wasn't trying to.
And no, and there was a lawyer up here spoke, and I think he's.
Richard Ash.
He's into all the names and addresses of everyone, yeah, right there. He could probably help you out with contacts too.
We got it right.
Sure.
Guys, if I'm down here, you hit it off. Thank you, guys. You want to withdraw, you want to, want to come back here in 60 days? I don't know.
60, you give it up? Can we do 60, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Anyway, we'll keep it involved, and we'll keep everybody, and then the neighborhood knows this is still going. Not when is it going to happen again.
Yeah, until November, right?
Yeah.
Which one?
All right, November, yeah, right now. We can make one. Yeah, the boss. When are you going to make the dates? No, I'm only teasing, yeah. You're the one that sets the tone. November, true, it's November. When's elections, eight? Elections are the eighth, all right? All right, so that, sometimes we have one, we could do a 15th. 15th and 20th. Bobby, she might.
Yeah.
All right, well, sometimes I know we've had one in November because of elections, but let's do this. Why don't we do November 15th? We'll have one in that, at least, right? November 15th, I could have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I got in case number 21-71, Attorney Project Foley for variances to demolish existing single-family home and build a new two-family townhouse, cellhouse on the home on the premises number 49 Shea Street. I make a motion to rehair this project on November 15th of 2022.
Second.
Second, with new plans in New York.
With new plans, all right, thank you.
Get them, get them to us at least two weeks ahead.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Second and all in favor?
Yeah.
All right, post, some move. Representative on tonight's old business, ZBA 22-8, C Street Properties LLC for variance, special permit, floodplain special permit to remove the commercial structure and build a four-unit residential building with parking on the premises number 1092 C Street. Yep, we have a representative here. Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of C Street Properties LLC and also Ervis Topali, its manager. Ervis is actually joining us online because he lives in LA, but I believe his father may be here tonight. As you indicated, the property is at 1092 C Street. It's presently a commercial building. Right now, the, the brick building that sits on the site essentially takes up the entire front of the site with very minimal setbacks, other than the rear setback. It has setbacks of about one foot on either side, and it's essentially set back right on the street. It's about a 7,329 square foot parcel. The property is, when, when we initially filed this application, was zoned Business B. It's since been rezoned by Councilor McCarthy to Residence A. And Councilor McCarthy can speak for himself, but I know in listening to meetings, his concern was to try to modify the zoning so that it would be more consistent throughout the, the house net community. Although there are some businesses along the C Street corridor, this particular location really didn't, no longer suited a commercial use. It's essentially surrounded on both sides.
I can stop you there, council. Here's what I think, here's what I think is sitting in a resident there, that I do not want to lose commercial space in House Neck. There's not enough there, they're almost all gone.
Yep.
So I would not be, I would just tell you upfront, there's no residents that I would be in favor of without commercial space on top. And I think that's just the way I feel. And, and the council, I talked to the council, I told him the way I feel. He said he feels the same way. So we're going to have a big, long night that we're not going to go in. I'm just trying to help.
But, 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 but I think you, you have to, Mr. Chairman, understand that these folks have owned this property for a significant amount of time, made efforts to lease this property to commercial.
Counselor, I'll stop you there again. And I know the background of what's going on there. He wants too much money for what he's, what's available. People have tried to rent that place and put things in, and he puts a rent there that's crazy. It's just, I, I know what's happening down in that, I'm there. I'm involved with the people, I'm involved with people who try to rent places and put business in. Could be a bait shop in there, could be something else. We got scoops over there, that might not be there. We just can't be losing business down in House Neck. We don't have any spaces left, they're gone. We took them all. Get rid of alderies, we made a parking lot, we did, I mean, it's bizarre, finlay, it's four units. The council is going to go through it tonight, all the stuff.
With all due respect, Mr.
Counsel, I can waste, I'll let you go all night.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, that's a better argument at the city council when this site is being rezoned. It's not a, it's not an argument here because as you know.
It's not, I'm just saying, I won't, personally.
But as you know, the zoning allows it.
And I'm not losing more space. I'm telling you now, I won't vote for it in public. I won't vote for that at all without commercial space on top. That's one you never thought, I don't know what.
Commercial space on the first floor, you're talking about?
Street level, commercial space. And then put your residents in the back, figure out a nice building that works with commercial space up top, and I think we can make that work for the whole neighborhood. I don't think it's fair to the neighborhood to lose commercial space in House Neck. We don't have any left, it's gone. If you want a bait store, where do you go? There's nothing left.
For the sake of the.
With the new marina going in and everything, we're going to have no commercial space to give them a stop to get a, I don't know if they want, whatever. I don't know what they want.
Well, you, you've made yourself clear, Mr. Chairman. I think for the purposes of tonight's record, let me just finish my presentation.
I will.
Let me allow Mr. Donahue, who's with me tonight, to, to present the plans. And we, and if, and if it's the, and if the, your other board members also join in your concern about the loss of commercial space, although the zoning allows it, mind you, then, then we'll, we'll take that back to the owners and have that discussion.
I'm just trying to save you a lot of time, because I think there's a lot of people even here that probably get to that reason. I don't know.
Well, I know there was a letter made of the record from the folk, the, the woman that owns, I believe, the, how many scoops, or how's many scoops. I read that letter. I understand her, her, she has the same position that you do, Mr. Chairman, that she doesn't want to lose commercial space in the neck. The reality is, however, it's already, already been rezoned to residential. So it's likely that many of those users are going to seek to rezone these to residential use, if the buildings don't support a commercial use of the site. And not all of them do support a commercial site, use of the site. Just because they zone that way. I mean, there's been other, other properties out at House Neck that have been occupied for a significant amount of time, whether it's bars or, or restaurants or, or other, other users. But having said that, I'll, I'll just, I'll turn this over to Mr. Donahue in a second. But this applicant is essentially seeking to remove the existing commercial building, which, as I said, is completely non-conforming, has no setbacks. My understanding is that my neighbor, my client has spoken with the owners across the street and, and that about it, and are quite favorable towards a residential redevelopment of the site, which is different than your position, Mr. Chairman. And he's then seeking to redevelop this property for a four-unit commercial building. I won't go into the details, I'll let Mr. Donahue talk about those details. But as I said, when we applied for this, this was zoned Business B. We therefore requested a special permit to allow the, the residential use. And again, I believe that we satisfy all of the special permit requirements here. And in fact, we're improving the conditions by making it setback further from the residential neighbors, where we, we have parking for nine vehicles in the rear of the site. This, this actually, the only thing that this is seeking variances for is essentially a continuation of the variances that exist today. And we're actually improving upon that by increasing the front setback from zero to 7.9 feet, and the right side setback to 8.6 and 10 feet respectively. So we're pulling this off the sides and, and making it a better, better overall building for the neighborhood. We did speak with, with Councilor McCarthy, and as I indicated, my client, as he told me, spoke with the neighbors, and I believe a couple of the neighbors were here, last meeting to speak in favor of this proposal. We're sympathetic to the business community. I understand your concerns about the business community and the use there. But if the property doesn't work, and, and when I say work, Mr. Chairman, I mean work for the owner of the property, meaning it satisfies him that he has enough income coming in to this, from this property to satisfy the expenses of the property, whether it be taxes, by the way, which are taxed commercially in the city of Quincy, which is much higher than residential tax. And therefore requires him to charge rent that's commensurate with that. The house, the, the, the ice cream restaurant wasn't supporting the, the, the taxes and the insurance costs on this building and the maintenance costs on this building. It's an old building, it needs maintenance. And so therefore he has to charge appropriate rent. And if people are down in House Neck who are seeking to utilize this as a commercial use, can't afford to pay the rent that he's seeking, and he can't, and he therefore cannot rent the property, then this is a proposal that I think needs to be considered by the board. To force somebody to continue a commercial use of the site when the zoning allows him to do otherwise, I think is an unfair burden to place on the, on the, on the owner. But having said that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Donahue and we'll just kind of go through the book. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Brian Donahue, Donahue Architects here in Quincy, 21 McGrath Highway. A little bit taken back by, by what's been said so far. Because originally, when we were approached by the, by the owner, Mr. Topali, the wish was that we could save the existing building and build residential above it, while converting it all to residential, not keeping residential. He was very emphatic about the fact that he was having trouble renting. I don't know the specifics of rents requested or anything about, anything about that. But after evaluation of the building, it was determined that, that it really has a lot of structural deficiencies, and it wasn't really going to be adaptable through adding residential units to it vertically. So we felt that the best solution for this was to take it down and raise it and develop an individual building for, for units, which he requested to put up. So this, this diagram shows obviously the facade and shows the site. What they have done in previous years was they installed a drainage system for. What they have done in previous years was they installed a drainage system for stormwater runoff. As you can see, the footprint of the building is right on the property line on C Street and to the east, right on the neighbor's property line there. So what we would gain by taking the building down would be able to move the building back off the street and more in line with the houses as you go down C Street and also take it off the neighbor's yard because it's really on top of his house. So that is basically the existing conditions. Our proposal, as Ed mentioned, takes the building from 2,200 square foot footprint to 1,400 square feet. It takes it eight to 10 feet off the neighbor's property on the right, on the east, and another nine feet off the street on C Street. The parking supports the four units. We've got nine spaces plus an accessible unit, accessible space. We are using, continuing to use Hull Street as an easement to get to the parking in the rear.
They go down Hull and take a look, correct?
Yes, yes.
Why can't cars even go in there now to deliver stuff? It's all roped off.
Because it's not his property.
That's what I'm trying to figure out here.
Yeah, there's a legal easement.
That's what I looked up.
I don't know what they have.
No, we'll talk later, but I'm just saying, they got it all roped off, so no one can use it.
There's a legal easement in the back that allows.
And that's what it says.
Right.
So just to continue, the floor plans are, we've got three levels. Again, what has allowed us to do by taking the building down, right now, the lower level in the building is above grade, so by taking it down, we can bring the grade down for the lower level unit off the parking to be an accessible unit. So we have a common entryway off the back. The two units on the street level are entered from the street, and they can also enter through a stair hall in the middle of the building to get up. So the basic program is ground floor, one unit, two units on the street level, and one unit on the second floor. Yep, the elevations depict the change in grade on C Street, the lower right. You can see it's a two-story building. We've put a hip roof on it to make it, to help scale it down, although it's not, it's five or six feet under the required 35 feet for residential buildings. So we've tried to add some character. We've got clapboard siding, shingles, architectural roof shingles, double hung windows. We think this is more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and the street, and we think it's an improvement. The main entry would be off the parking level right here in the center at grade. And then these are just a pebble rendering the street views from C Street, showing that it's in scale with neighboring house and so forth. So again, we think it's an improvement. The other items of discussion today are, I'll leave up to Mr. Fleming.
Mr. Chairman, the only other item I'd raise is it's not, you know, the parking in the rear is perfect for residential type use, whereas it's not good for retail or commercial type use. You know, there are residents there, you know, a stream of continuous cars coming to a retail type use, you know, during busy hours is not necessarily the best reuse of the site, and hence why we believe it was better suited for residential use. So with having said that, I'll let you open it up to the other three.
Councilor?
You're up. Dave McCarthy, Board One Counsel, 48 Whitney Road. This is kind of a pet peeve area for me, all the way down to the Yard Club. Just for the record, that change that I pushed to try to go from Business B to Res A is still sitting in ordinance. I've wrestled with the planning board a little bit, planning department, talked to Mr. Duker a little bit. They were very hesitant to make moves in regards to changing to Business B. I had kind of kicked it back to a point where the thought was if someone was going to get out of a business down there and go residential, that Business B, to me, made things too big in that section, right there on C Street. It's very narrow. And I tried to push it back so that the boards would have a lot more control if someone came in there and bought a few parcels and tried to do something by right. I'm still going to stay on this Business B thing a little bit to try to get it so that folks can still be able to go residential, still be able to go business, but not as high and not as wide, and try to keep it small because it's very narrow. So that's the first thing. That didn't go through. It's still sitting there, and we're still bantering it around. I agree with the chairman in regards to the commercial. I know that they made good points about parking, but Hausneck, you know, and a lot of years ago, and the chairman mentioned a few, had a variety store, two or three of them, Paige's Drugstore across the street, you know, a couple of sub-shops, and now we're down to pretty much off the hook, and the Manit, and maybe the ice cream place besides the barrooms. You know, I kind of look at this like Squonam a little bit, where they have their small commercial area, and ours is dwindling. We're already down to a handful. So my thoughts, and I know, you know, I'd love them to go back to the drawing board, is that the building's always been the same building. It's not pretty at all. And it's right on top of C Street. So, you know, the talk about pulling it back's great, talk about getting rid of it's great, but if there was some way to put some small commercial in there, a sub-shop, the ice cream shop, possibly something else, that really has gone on and lasted in that area, regardless of parking, it's worked. It's never been really a problem. But I know it doesn't have the parking. But, you know, to have commercial on the first floor in some regards and have residential set back, they could still, you know, really have a nice project and take care of an area that's really been like a blighted building for a long time. I'd love to see us go back to the drawing board and kick it around a little bit more, possibly have suggestions with the neighbors a little bit, you know, some of the neighbors that are in the area. I know it's mostly right there on the Main Street, C Street, and there wasn't a lot of interest, but to keep that commercial option just a little down there, a little bit more, is a good thing for Hausneck. It gives folks a little bit, I think if it was two brand-new commercial, small commercial locations that would reasonable rent that, you know, that somebody would use it, and it could benefit, instead of going all the way up C Street to go somewhere, they could get what they needed down in Hausneck. So we had a lot of things. We probably had over 20 locations to be able to get something at a variety store or et cetera, and it's dwindling down to nothing. So I look at that at the same time. I'd like to clean up that corner, but I'm kind of leaning towards hoping that we could design something where we could still have commercial on the front and some type of residential, maybe two units or three units with the parking in the back. Also, if the building was, and I'm looking at the drawing down here, moved a little bit to the left, a little bit more towards that next parcel, possibly there's a driveway that could be put in down the left and avoid that hole coming in that right-of-way off of Hull Street, you know, right along this edge here, that possibly they could get.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know, if they made that a little wider. It's just an alley now, but it's a good thought. And, but I'd love to see them tweak it a little bit and get back to us. Thank you.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor of this project? First call?
Chris Jacobs, Krieger Manor, I live right next door to it. I am in favor for a residential building, but the biggest thing is the park. This is not their property. It's caused so many issues that although, this is not my property either, but it's an easement access, and it's caused all kinds of issues that has brought the neighbors involved, and they shut it down. This easement access only gives permission to the property owner and maintenance vehicles. It's not open to the public and all this stuff, so everyone's got to figure all this out. And there's not enough, everyone's got to look at this. There's not enough parking back there for nine parking spaces. Four units, that's way too big. You can work on it all and everything, but it's not nine spaces. You can't even get a fire truck back there. What else? Talking about this property, making access to it, that is my property, and we can try to figure something out. But the neighbor over here is very unhappy with access to the back parking lot. Yeah, I don't know. I just wanted to.
Anyone else want to speak in favor?
1100 C Street. That's actually my house to the right of the project that wants to be built, but my concern is, again, I reiterate what Chris said, there's not room for nine parking spots back there, and in order for traffic to go back there, they have to cross through my private easement. I don't think anybody else wants ongoing traffic through their backyard. I can't block it off to the owner for maintenance or services or anything, but it's my backyard. It's blocked off right now from Hull Street to the start of the property where the back of the parking lot is because I've had nothing but issues back there. My grandson's almost been hit three times, and that's also where I park as well.
Do people park there to go up to scoops in the back?
They used to until I blocked it off. I had to block it off and install cameras around my house because it became such an issue where people just thought 24 hours they were going to go. That easement belongs to my property. It's not just for cars to free flow and try to go through there, and that's my concern. The fire truck can't go back there. The street, Hull Street, is absolutely horrible. The street going down, there's many blind spots. There's lots of kids riding down with bikes on Hull Street, and I don't want ongoing traffic just whenever they want going through that property, which is my property easement. It's very steep, and like I said, my concern is the fire truck can't fit back there, and my concern is for the safety of my family. That's where I park. So I go down Hull Street, and I have to turn to park into my backyard. So I'm in favor for something being there, but not nine cars parking back there and ongoing traffic, absolutely not, because that's going to cause an inconvenience to my family, and it's a safety issue back there for me. It's not a street you can just drive through and people walk through, but I've had to chain it off on both ends because I've had so many issues with parking, hitting my fence. My grandson's almost been hit three times back there. Cars are flying down, and there's lots of blind spots going in and out of Hull Street. So those are my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else speak in favor? Second call? Third call? Call up, party hearing closed. Correspondents?
My name is James O'Sullivan, from the Chief Civil Engineer, DPW. We reviewed the submitted for the above reference project, and our comments are as follows. Number one, specify how much of previous area will be increased due to the development. Two, provide plan showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility, grading, drainage, and construction details. The flood zone line and erosion control measures should also be delineated. Explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Install survey monuments to delineate a public right-of-way. These monuments shall be set by professional land surveyors. Five, provide dimensions and grades for paving area and all driveway entrances. Six, the existing lot slash parcels should be consolidated into one lot slash parcel for the development. The consolidation plan shall be recorded at the registry of deeds, Ron Falcone. All proposed buildings should have house numbers assigned by the engineering division, DPW, before any building permit can be issued. Seven, confirm whether the existing easement for the access and utility can be used for the new development. The applicant should provide documents showing that they have the rights to develop the access road. Provide plans on a condition of the private road. Eight, this section of C Street was repaved in 2019. There is a five-year moratorium, party digging on a new paved street. Number nine, upon completion of the project, as-built plans showing all utilities and building footprints need to be submitted, along with a digital file. Further information is required, please advise.
Call up, party hearing closed. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Can forward state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is David Jacobs. No relation to the gentleman just up here a second ago. I live at 11 Dunn's Court in Quincy, but I'm the property owner at 10 Charles Street, which is two lots away from this parcel, you know, if you go across the street. You know, I'm here to, I'm kind of undecided about it. On one hand, I think it's a great idea because the building that's there is kind of old, but I have a lot of concern about the main floor. I think that, you know, we have dwindling commercial space in Hausneck. My house that I own on Charles Street itself used to be a commercial lot, and in 1998, my father and stepmother were up here fighting those residential homes going in, and now we own it. So those things happen. But my main concern really about the main floor is that the two units, they're too small. It's just, it's too much concentration. There's not enough space there, you know, for, I know it's, I think it's two bedrooms. I mean, I just can't imagine, you know, like, three kids, you know, parents that live in half of a floor of a building. I would much rather see that, you know, that space, you know, stay commercial. But, you know, again, I'm keeping an open mind about this project. I just, I just think it can be better.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed to run aside? Second call? Counselor?
So I just wanted to come up, and I agree with Council McCarthy on this. I think this needs to go back to the drawing board. It's way too big. It's just, it's enormous in the size, and it would be nice if we could keep something commercial there, but it's just, it's, it's, something has to go there, but in this particular case, I think it needs to go back to the drawing board, and it's, the variance that they're asking for, the easement, and the DPW made some great points, too. So I was happy to hear that as well. So I think at this point, it's just not ready for primetime at this point.
Thanks. Last call? Opposed or undecided? Call up, party hearing closed. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't like the idea of four units there. There's no commercial space up top. I'll be voting against this project.
I agree, something has to go in there. I'd like to see the right-of-way clarified, Counselor.
Yeah, it's a legal right-of-way. It's part of the, the woman that commented, I believe, is a renter of the property. The owner of the property before granted an easement from right to pass into repass. There's no restrictions on that. I'll provide that clarification. I'll provide that clarification.
Thank you.
Just like it's too much, it's a shame to lose that much more commercial space in the city. What are the taxes per year on the current building?
I don't know. I don't know. All I can tell you is that the commercial tax, the taxes is twice that of residential. So, you know, that's the comment that I made about the need for, to collect the rent that's necessary to pay those kind of costs.
Thank you.
Taxes of $12,000 a year.
Counselor, could you just clarify for me, the zoning again?
Yeah, I thought, I thought that the zoning had gone through, but it's Business B. We're seeking a special permit to convert, to, yes, to allow the residential redevelopment of the site. The only variance that we need for this particular thing, and again, it's almost a continuation of the existing nonconformities, which is the setbacks, because we will not comply with a 25-foot setback all around the property. But again, this is an improvement to that. But I've heard, I've heard the boards, without belaboring this, I've heard the board's concerns. I've heard the neighbor's concerns. I'll talk with my client about the idea of maybe utilizing the first floor for commercial space. Not sure what type of commercial space it will be utilized for, whether a retail-type commercial space is the best or whether it's an office-type commercial space. We could certainly.
Lawyers, lawyers are always critical.
Your bars, yeah, exactly. But, you know, it's not suited for a lot of retail-type space. But we'll look at that. We'll look at Councilor McCarthy's comments about the. Um, but we'll look at that, we'll look at Counselor McCarthy's comments about the building. I really don't think we can gain access to the parking lot any other way than the easement that's provided access, um, during the course of the life of the building. I don't believe we can move the building as, as suggested because the topography is such a, such a sharp drop-off that it would be a very, very steep driveway moving into the back of the lot. So without that, I'd, I'd, I'd ask that we move this matter to another date.
What they have for meetings for us is November 8th and the 22nd, but we can't be here the 8th because it's election day. Or is it the 1st? Is it the 8th or the 1st?
I don't know, you got like that official in the audience.
Is October available, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, you gonna have the plans and everything ready?
Well, I mean, again, it would be a modification of the first floor, but I don't know. Why don't we, why don't we go to the November date then?
22nd. Now that's wrong, because now, that's up to us. It's, it's not set yet, and nothing's been in. Guys, guys, so here's what they had down for us, the 8th and the, the 8th and the 22nd. We just said they wouldn't have us at election day, we sent someone out of here thinking they're coming back November 15th. We're only going to have one meeting in November anyway because of the election, so you just want to move it to the 15th?
Yeah.
And then we'll just change these two dates because we're not going to be here the 8th, can't. Election day is the 8th, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, I just want to make that. That'll be right.
So move this to the 15th?
Let's move it to the 15th and get rid of those two meetings.
Okay, Counsel, 15th?
Yeah, fine, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number 22-8, C Street Properties LLC for variance, special permit, flood plain permit to remove the commercial structure and build a new four-unit residential building with a parking on premises numbered 1092 C Street, I make a motion to move this to the 15th of November, 22.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Thank you.
Posed, so moved. Thank you, Counsel. Further on to tonight's agenda, ZBA 2237, Benjamin Lee for variance finding to subdivide a single lot to two lots, demolish the existing garage shed, and construct a single-family residence on one of the lots, premises number 1439 Furnace Brook Parkway.
Good evening, Benjamin Lee, um, Benning Architects, 121 Briar Lane, Westwood, um, chairman, um, chairman, uh, member, uh, board member. Uh, thank you for your time here to present 1439 Furnace Brook Parkway. Uh, the owner is proposing to, uh, subdivide the existing lot into two, um, and, uh, demolish the existing garage that's facing Ashland, and then, uh, construct a new, uh, single-family facing Ashland. Um, the existing structure at 1439 Facing Furnace Brook Parkway will remain, uh, as existing, and then we're going to have a new, uh, proposed single-family. The subdivision of the lots in size is in comparison similar to the, the block between Ashland and Furnace Brook Parkway and the adjacent lots as well. Um, the, the plans will be traditional with, uh, living, uh, room, dining room, kitchen on the first floor, and, um, four bedrooms, uh, two bathroom on the second floor, and a half-bath on the first floor. Uh, the name, the style and character of the, of the building is colonial, um, and is in line with the, the neighborhood, um, fabric. Um, the exterior material is going to be, um, fiber cement, cardboard siding, and PVC trim. So, um, in summary, uh, we are trying to propose something that is in line with the, the neighborhood, um, in both the lot sizes as well as the, the fabric of the neighborhood.
What, uh, what's the size of your building? Sorry? How big is the building?
The building, the footprint is 1,300 square feet, so, uh, the, the finished, uh, square footage will be 2,600. So that shows the, the, the front elevation, um, in colonial's, um, style and character.
How come the garage is in such disrepair and still even there? Someone could get killed in that building if it fell.
That, um, I don't know how to answer that, but I mean, like, that's, that's the owner's decision in terms of how to maintain the garage.
Yes, not maintaining the garage. The property is beautiful, but garage, you gotta go.
But the garage definitely is, is being, it's gone.
Seem better there.
One way or the other.
One way or the other, right. Uh, anyone have any questions? I don't have any questions.
No, I don't have any. No questions.
Thanks. Uh, you can have a seat. Is anyone here who wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call? Call that close, I have a letter here from the DPW, read into the record.
Every case I, DPW last night, I know it's because Brian's not here.
1439 Furnace Brook Parkway, case number ZBA 22-37. We have reviewed the submittal for the above referenced project and our comments are as followed. Specify how much impervious area will be increased due to the development. Provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layouts of utility, grading, drainage, and construction details. Explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Install survey monuments to delineate the subdivision. The monument shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Upon completion of the project as built, plans showing all utilities and building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file. Further information is required, please advise.
Is there anyone, call that part of the hearing closed? Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Come on up, state your name, name and address for the record, please.
Tim Schram, 30 Salem Street.
Say that one again.
Tim Schram, 30 Salem Street.
You got it.
Been a resident at 30 Salem Street for 30 years, my wife's 61, need this. I believe, did he just say his lot size is going to be 2,600 square feet?
No, that's the house. The house, 2,600.
There's only been two variances in this area. One on 8 Beverly.
The old ones were there, those houses, sorry.
I'm sorry, yes, but what it was, was, it was, didn't have the frontage, had the acreage.
Right.
I believe this has the, the frontage, but it doesn't have the acreage to support two homes on this lot. Because this is residential A, property, which is what?
76.
76, and this property only has 11,300. 11,000, 11,300, so if you divide in half...
It's like 4,000, 2,000.
Right. And it's never, if you do this one here, a lot of people in the neighborhood will end up doing theirs too.
You may have 10 more.
Exactly. And like I said, we've been here for six, 61 years in this neighborhood.
Right.
And only two variances, 8 Beverly and this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
Behind him.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rob Farley, I live at, uh, 35 Salem Street. Uh, I've been a resident up in that neighborhood for, uh, 60 years, and, uh, I just feel strongly that it's a Residence A neighborhood. Everybody bought in, in fact, uh, bought that neighborhood because they like it the way it is, and, uh, you know, you just can't change just because you feel it, you know? So I, I'm strongly believing in Residence A and should keep it the way it is.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Second call? Third call? Call that part of the hearing closed. Uh, before I do close it, I gotta, I gotta read a letter into, uh, it's from Counselor Palmucci, which don't usually write letters, uh...
Martin Akins, Chairman of the Quincy Zory Board of Appeals. Subject, case number 22-37, 1439 Furnace Brook Parkway. Dear Chairman Akins, please accept this letter as notice of my opposition to the 1439 Furnace Brook Parkway proposal. The previous application was withdrawn as a result of these, of the comments and communications from neighbors and strong opposition to the proposal. I previously communicated the extent and breadth of the concern among the area residents to the proponent who decided not to proceed any further in the process, given the insubstantial opposition. Those concerns still remain. As you know, I have rarely, if ever, taken a position on a matter before the board. My normal practice is to notify and inform the neighbors and communicate my efforts to do so with you. However, in this instance, I feel compelled to reiterate that the connection, that the concerns in opposition to this appro, uh, proposal and implications such a variance grant would likely produce. The strength of our city lies in the diversity and quality of our individual neighborhoods. Allowance of this variance application would serve to threaten the sanctity of the neighborhoods. I, as such, I urge you to deny the application in any future application that is based on the same condition. If you have any questions concerning, please contact me. Board four, Counselor Brian, no moving.
John, since you're such a good cameraman, go ahead, go ahead.
John Oderfeld, 62 Ground Mall Road, I mean, after hearing Counsel Paul Muji's, um, words, I just want to stand up here and back Counsel Paul Muji and say that if he doesn't think you should approve this, then you probably shouldn't approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Call that part of the hearing closed. Uh, you know, it's a beautiful piece of property, and I, and I know what the applicant's trying to do, the one, there's one on the right, and there's one on the left, but there's three others right in, right in the middle there that were just, I think they have a gorgeous piece of property, it should stay like that, and, and it's not bad having 11,000 square feet, so I will be voting no.
Likewise, um, I think we're, I, I have a hard time creating...
Hardships.
Illegal lots, so I'll, I'll be voting against.
Yeah, and it doesn't sit well would be when you create your own hardship and ask for relief, I'll be, I'll be voting negative as well.
For those sentiments, I'm also concerned about, um, the layout of the plans and the, and the parking, particularly the five spaces fronting on Furnace Brook and how you get those cars to back out of the driveway, lots of Furnace Brook Parkway without creating significant, uh, possible...
Two families.
Safety issue.
Two family.
And I'm not a fan of changing some, uh, rez to, to...
Thank you.
Agreed, the, the, the new house looks peculiarly small, which ordinarily I wouldn't have a problem with, but tells me that the lot is too small to handle the two properties. It's a pretty, pretty area, and yet the parking just, just jumps out if it's being, A, taking up too much room, killing grain space on Ashland, and B, that's just a trip for the fire department.
Want to come up? If you, step forward, please. You can hear, no one wants it, we will give you, you can withdraw without prejudice, move on and tell your client you did your best. Uh, we can vote for it if you want to go further, whatever you want to do with it.
More complications if we vote against it.
Uh, well, we're not going to vote against, I mean, to vote tonight, but I mean, can we come back with more vacation?
I, I won't. Personally, I don't know how they feel. I just think it, it's a beautiful lot, it's 11,000, and it should stay like that. You know, you got two driveways on the, on the other house, I don't know, so...
Just to, I mean, just to clarify, the, the application before...
Oh, it's nothing to do with it.
Okay.
We just look at this.
Okay. Um, is there any way to, how about the, the front right now, the reason why it's that many parking is because of the two families?
Mm-hmm.
It was grandfathered that way? Uh, if we convert it into a single-family, would that, would that mean anything to the, the board member?
But you're still subdividing the lot, you're making them, you're making, you're making a house, you know, uh, it, it just don't conform anymore to our, our rules, you know? 15 years ago, it might have happened. Why? People, people aren't paying attention 15 years ago, and that's why we got these lots that we have. 3,500 square foot lot with, with a three-decker on it, and you go, whoa, where are you going to put the cars?
So even though...
It wasn't that long ago, it wasn't like there was time to horse up or something, there was cars, and then they, they just let it go because everyone's, no one paid attention, we didn't have rules. And look at the lots we got. Hausneck, same thing.
So even though we, sorry, I'm sorry. So even though we stay with the rest, rest A, which is single-family, and, and the lot division, the subdivision is, is consistent with the, with the adjacent lots?
I understand what you want to do, I just wouldn't do it. Person, person I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I just wouldn't.
You're carrying a lot of opposition, especially when a Counselor, who, he doesn't oppose anything, trust me.
He don't write us letters. He stays out of, he just tells the people what's going on, when the meeting is, let them come up if they want to speak. Debbie really does, he write a letter unless he's really, really opposed.
Um, just also to clar, just also to clarify, this is my first time presenting this project, you know?
Right, right.
To the committee.
Right.
And we did, uh, I did contact Mr. Palmucci, Palmucci, like, uh...
Yeah.
On April 25th, and I got an email, respond back, but I never got a chance to talk to the neighbor...
Yeah.
In terms of hearing their concerns.
Right.
Um, we have two opposition today, but there's something that I, I could have addressed as, if I had the opportunity to talk to the neighbor and, um, and modify the plans as we, as we, as we speak.
It's just not one neighbor? We heard a couple neighbors, a lot of people didn't speak against that.
Okay.
I mean, if there was, if there wasn't, there was a couple people, you know? Wasn't like those 20 people in the neighborhood all came down and said, no, it's just, we don't want to make a hardship on your front door.
Understood.
The reason, right.
Um, so can, can I, um, talk to my, talk to the owner before we do the withdrawal formally, uh, through writing, or do I have to do it right now?
No, you have to do it now. I mean, I, if you want to make a phone call, I'll call you back up.
Uh, the owner is right here.
Oh, all right, why don't we take a rest, five minutes, take a five-minute break and we'll come right back. If we can reconvene, uh, I guess you want to vote?
Yes.
All right, what we have here is a letter that was just given to me, uh, Dr. Gary, uh, Gregory Catapotis, and he wants this in the record for his appeal, and it's about the letter the Counselor wrote, and it's three pages, and it'll go in the record towards their repeal, but they want to vote so they can appeal, I guess, or whatever. However, that's going to work, it's up to them. Can we have a vote, please, in that case?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case 22-37, Benjamin Lee for a vine, uh, variance finding to subdivide the lot, a single lot into two lots, demolish the existing garage shed, and construct a single-family residence on one lot on a premises numbered 1439 Furnace Brook Parkway, I make a motion to deny the requested variances and findings.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved, denied.
All right, thank you very much.
And, and the letter's in the record.
I agree.
You're welcome. Further on to tonight's, whole business, ZBA 2252, James Rudolph, or administrative appeal to revoke the permit for the premises 77 Ocean Ave. Is the applicant a representative here? Man, before I even go there, if everyone could please take a note that's going to speak tonight, we should have done that earlier. Anyone going to speak tonight, please stand and raise your right hand. If anyone's going to speak tonight. If you don't, you're not going to speak, unless you're, unless you're a Counselor, uh...
A lawyer.
A lawyer, right.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing? So yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Justin Campbell, I'm an attorney, law firm Rudolph Friedman at 92 State Street, Boston, Mass.
Okay, you have the floor, Ms. Campbell.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and... Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Again, my name is Justin Campbell, I'm an attorney, and I'm here on an enforcement action tonight, and the action's being brought by James and Sheila LaFleur for a residence at 73 Ocean Avenue. And the reason for this enforcement action is they're asking this board to sit in the shoes of the building inspector and to rescind the building permit that was issued, or a foundation-only permit that was issued for 77 Ocean Avenue, um, here in Quincy. And there are several reasons for this, I know you've probably already read the brief that we've filed
Yes, yes.
And seen the pictures that have been submitted, so I'm not gonna go into all that level of detail. Seeing what you've been through tonight, and the last time I was here, I had a busy board, I'm on a board myself, it's not, no one here is as busy as yours, so I totally get it, uh, be as quick as I can. So, the LaFleurs, when they first moved to their house, uh, many, many years ago exactly, but they went to the town, the city hall, and they asked about the lot next door. It was a weeded lot, they wanted to know what the deal was with the lot.
Mm-hmm.
And they were told it was unbuildable by the building department at the time. I believe it was someone named Mr. Knapp. I don't know everyone here, because again, I'm not from here, but, um, certainly appreciate it. And, so they didn't think a whole lot of it, they did notice that the assessment at the time for the property was around 33,000, and then they went on their way, come to find out someone had bought the lot and had intended to build on this lot. The problem, biggest problem with 77 Ocean Avenue with this lot is that there's no frontage on a street. The lot itself sits at the end of a private way. Ocean Avenue is a public way that has, um, that meets up with a private way, and that section of it is actually still private. And Mr. LaFleur confirmed this with the city attorney a few years ago, and we submitted a copy of the email from that attorney, I believe his name was Attorney Timmons, um, when he got that opinion from council, from city council, the city solicitor, I believe it was. And so, we have a public way that turns into a private way that is only 16 feet wide at its widest. This Ocean Avenue goes in front of the LaFleurs' house and then stops, and then there is this overgrown area, and there's nothing after that, there's actually no road in front of the lot for the proposed 77 Ocean Avenue. And so, the case law is pretty clear, as I mentioned in the brief, that in the Shea versus Lexington, the second case that I mentioned, this appeals court case, it says that if frontage on a way is to be achieved, it might, the road must be constructed, and not just depicted on a plan, because you can't drive on a plan. We have, essentially, have a lot here that is on a unconstructed road. And so, they, they're not completely against a lot being, something being built there, but they would like to have some kind of review. When they learned about this foundation-only permit, they, they called us, they called their, their brother-in-law, who's also an attorney in our office, and asked, how can this be? We know nothing about this. We take a look at the plan that was submitted, and the LaFleurs obtained a copy of the building jacket when they first looked into this matter, and there was a per, building permit and the foundation plan. No site plan per se. You could call the foundation plan a site plan if you choose, but I think it's missing some parts in order for it to be a proper site plan. So, again, they're not completely against something being built there, but the site plan that is provided, the slash foundation plan, doesn't provide for a lot of things. So, we not, first of all, I wanna also mention that we're not objecting to the property in terms of the dimensional requirements overall. The lot area is there, the square footage is there, the frontage would be there if the road were built. And also, we're wondering if there isn't an alternative means of access to the property, that's another question. Um, there's ledge on the property, significant ledge, which is actually shown on this plan, and so they're concerned about potential, what's gonna happen with that. An excavator was delivered to the property, I believe about a month ago, just shortly before the last meeting when we were continued, because there weren't enough members there that night, and, um, the, the, according to the little LaFleurs, the excavator that was delivered actually damaged the road. And so who's going to fix this, fix that on this private way? That needs to be determined. And they said that since that time, someone has been operating the excavator on the properties, doing some grading, and it sounds like they've been kind of breaking up the ledge a little bit. So they're asking for some transparency here. Um, they also said, Mr. Liver, LaFleur told me that when he went and spoke to Mr. Anderson at the building department, he was told at one point that no building permit should've been issued here, but one was, at least for a foundation-only. We also understand that it's okay to issue a foundation-only permit under the building code, and I did look that up myself. Uh, 780 CMR, R107, does allow for a foundation-only permit, provided, it says in the building code, adequate information has been filed. And here is where I suspect that they, it has not. This, the Quincy zoning code 9.1.2.1 states that inspectional services may require plans and specifications as necessary to determine compliance with these laws. The Quincy zoning code, code 9.5.3 requires that any site plan that is intended for a building, um, to contain plans for handling stormwater drainage. There's no mention of stormwater drainage on these plans. Uh, since Quincy zoning code 9.5.31C requires site plans to contain topography and drainage plans, um, that contain existing and proposed filed topography in two-foot intervals that is not contained in this plan. The zoning code also requires that the site plan contain calculations by a professional, professional-registered engineer. This foundation plan does not contain that information. So, and the site plan doesn't mention, um, much about utilities, there's a little bit of a reference to sewer. Um, so what the LaFleurs are concerned about is traffic. For example, they're telling me that when a car goes up their street, and I have driven by it and seen it, it's so, so narrow that a car has to back out in order to get out. There's no place to turn around unless you go through the, to the LaFleur driveway.
Right.
So you drive up and you back out. Um, so all, these are their primary concerns. And I would say also that, again, reiterate the fact that they're not opposed to something being built, but here we have, um, a, a lot that's not on a constructed way. The case law is clear, this permit should be rescinded, and when in fact that road is constructed, then the gentleman can reapply for his permit if he so chooses. That's it.
Uh, any questions?
Could you read it up there?
Sure. Well, I had one more thing I wanted to say, but I, do you want me to wait till I'm done? Okay, in terms of the building inspector's letter, I did, um, receive a copy of that today, and I was kinda surprised, actually, that, um, I've not met Mr. Duka, but he indicated that this was a buy, as a right permit, and I'm not sure if he's just not aware of the case law regarding constructed ways or not, maybe he is, probably super knowledgeable more than me, um, but, again, that, that way is just simply not constructed.
Thank you.
Okay.
What's calling?
Do you want me to move? Okay.
Hi, Rob Cullen, Assistant Building Commissioner, standing in for the, uh, Building Commissioner Jay Duka. His only board members. Apologize, I'm, uh, meet, yeah, I'm, I am not able to, at the meeting this evening due to schedule conflict. I'm writing this memo to clarify my reasons for issuing a building permit with the 77 Ocean Avenue. This permit that I issued is a by right permit, in every respect, and I understand the only concern with the capital is with the frontage of the lot. The Quincy zoning ordinance defines frontage, lot frontage of, a lot line coincided with the sideline of a street which provides both legal rights to vehicular access, physical vehicular access to the lot. Said line to be measured continuously along a single street or along two intersecting streets if their angle of intersection is greater than 120 degrees. Vehicular access to a building site on the lot shall be exclusively through the frontage of the lot. Ocean Ave is a way laid out by the city of Quincy many years ago that serves approximately 23 homes. The lot at 77 Ocean Avenue has the required frontage, and the project site plan depicts a 20-foot access drive to the lot, which will provide both legal and physical vehicular access. Note, the Massachusetts Comprehensive Fire Safety Code, 527 CMR, requires a 20-foot access width for emergency purposes. That's pretty much it. Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, I, I understand, I understand what's going on. Does anyone have any questions? Let's go on. Uh, here's, here's, here's the way we look at it, we have to make this decision. The way I look at it is, we have many dead-end homes in Quincy, and that's, that's where we build homes. And the guy offered the permit to put a foundation in, we looked at it, it's not, it's not given a price. So I'm gonna sit with the, uh, inspector, and then go file, I would vote against. Comments?
Still?
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm, there's, there's conflict there, I mean, you're saying that 16-foot access and the, and the city's claiming it's a 20-foot layout, so I don't, has to be a, something, has to be a, a plan or file somewhere that settles the conflict.
Yes, um, my client measured it himself, and he said the widest part he could find was 16 feet
Yeah, but you, you, as an attorney, you know it. Roads are not, are not always built to the limit.
This is true, they're not always built to the limits, but
So if it's 16 feet of pavement, doesn't mean it's not a 20-foot layout.
But the road isn't even built, as well.
It doesn't matter.
The road in front of their house is not built.
It doesn't matter, it goes 20 foot wide.
Right.
You know, I mean, um, that's my opinion.
Okay. And I know we put it in our brief, um, that the gentleman who bought this lot is an assistant, I just wanted to make disclosure, he's an assistant clerk, I believe, at City Hall. Um, we're not suggesting anything improper, improper there, we're just saying, uh, that he may have knowledge that we don't know about this lot, I don't know. But, but my understanding is, is that the law is that if it's on a, you can't get a building permit on an unconstructed way. The way must be built, and this way is not built.
Oh.
So.
I, I think the way is built, it's not 20 feet.
It's not built at all, there's no way there.
Okay.
It's just rock and
It's the end of the road.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. At this position, I'll, I'll hold the, uh, the city's vote, the city's firm.
I will as well, project site plan depicts a 20-foot, 20-foot access street. I'll vote for the full to this law.
Good chairman.
Yeah. The, uh, the letter's dated September 13 from Commissioner Duka. Uh, that would lead me to believe that he has communicated with you and reviewed your documentation and submitted
Doc's never reviewed anything.
Never.
Excuse me. Trying to direct my
Nice speech tonight?
Well, I'm trying to direct my attention to the
Whoa, 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 the lawyer's running the stick, no one spoke to you yet, wait a minute.
Yes, go ahead.
Senator.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to confirm that, uh, Mr. Duka has reviewed the information and the documentation that you've provided to this board tonight before he wrote this letter.
I don't know that, I don't know that he has.
Because it, this, there appears to be a conflict in factual background.
Correct.
What you're going to say.
There is, that's, that seems to be a conflict, um, in the fact that, that he says it's as a right when there's no road there, so that's difficult. I know it's at the end of the road, but the road supposedly goes in front of this lot, and it's just not built.
Well, it may not be paved, but it, um, you know, there's a difference between being paved and being built.
Right.
And so, there may be a dirt road there that is not paved, but it still
But there's no dirt, okay.
Needs the definition of a road, I don't know.
Right, there's nothing there.
I'm not an engineer.
It's a hill. All right, thank you, sir. Thank you.
It's right into the lot, it stops, and then there's the house line. Like you have with many, many dead-end streets, you go to the end, and there's a house there, a house there, and a house there.
Actually, it, it's not quite that way. What it is is What it is is, um, there's a, I don't wanna speak while the chairman's talking.
No further questions at this time.
May I make one comment, make a correction?
Mr. Franco?
Mr. Chairman, that's what I was looking for, the mention rose, the current mention. I mean, we have a question, the definition of a road construction. It's, it's particular, in the way, there's, uh, it doesn't say they construct roads that are not rock, and just don't have a definition of it. I have to make me something that I have to make.
Any last comments?
May I make one comment, please? Um, and that is that the road, it's not a situation where you have a dead-end road and there's a lot in front of it. This is a situation where Ocean Avenue keeps going, and this part of it is private, and this part is not constructed at all. And so the lot, as you're coming down Ocean Avenue, onto the private part, would be a lot on the right-hand side, not at the end.
Right. And you're ripping that all up, so you know you're gonna put these roads all the way through, correct?
I, I don't know that, because I haven't seen that on the, on a
Those are the roads, all the way, so
We haven't seen any record of that, but
You're ripping up, so you're ripping up, you're taking all those stones off to make that road go further. And, and one thing I'd say is, if you're doing that kind of demolition up there with those rocks that I saw, if I lived anywhere around, I would take pictures of my home. I would, I would take pictures of my home, get some class, wall class, whatever.
Right. It's really unfortunate, there's not enough, there's not very much oversight over the residential construction. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, another one?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case, uh, 22-52, James L. Rudolph, or administrative appeal to revoke the building permit for the premises numbered 77 Ocean Street, Quincy. I make a motion to deny the request.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed, so moved. Further on tonight's business, ZBA 2257, House 13
You're allowed to speak.
For variance to construct four townhouse units on the premises number 1214 Mill Street.
Wow, they let me speak, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Thanks a lot, yeah. My kids get hit by cars, your hands will have blood on them, all of you, all of you.
So, why don't you let anybody speak up, like, oh, I'm
That's ridiculous, it's just so corrupt, so corrupt. Now, taking it to court, I'm gonna win.
No, no, that's your right, no.
You let any of the neighbors speak, you got 20 letters, you got 20 letters
You're out of ball, you're out of ball.
You got 20 letters
Please leave the meeting.
You got 20 letters from neighbors saying how upset about this, and don't you guys do anything?
Please leave the meeting.
Don't you guys do anything?
Please leave the meeting. Thank you. You have the floor, sir?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for the record, my name is Carl Johnson, with, I'm an attorney with Law Offices at 35 Braintree Hill Office Park, Suite 103, and I'm the authorized representative of Curlew Quincy LLC, the owner of the property, at, um, 12 through 14 Mill Street. With me this evening is Patrick McGoon, an engineer from the firm of DeSalle Burke and Soller and Associates, and Brian, um, Brian Saluti, registered architect. They will present, uh, the existing proposed site conditions and the design of the proposed four residential townhomes, utilizing the topography and shape of the development parcel so that the townhomes are compatible with the development on Mill Street and not detract from the mixed-use zoning of the neighborhood. The request before the board is for relief for dimensional requirements on the section 4.1, Table of Dimensional Requirements, for lot size, front, rear, side yard setbacks, from the residency district's requirements for residential development in the Business B Zone. The requested zoning relief will allow the petition to file a special permit for the proposed residential development as required by the zoning ordinance. I would just like to distribute, as Patrick, as he stalks, uh, on the approach.
Yes.
This is a picture of the area of the site and the existing condition.
Patrick?
Good evening, Patrick McGoon, DeSalle Burke, Soller and Associates, twelve sixty-six Furness Brook Parkway. Uh, so here, we have here twelve, twelve to fourteen Mill Street. It's an existing ten thousand seventy-one square foot lot, um, fronted on, uh, Mill Street. The, uh, existing building there dates back to possibly nineteen hundred. Uh, it's an existing duplex. Uh, there's a couple of driveways that serve the property. One just adjacent to it, uh, to the house. Um, and then another driveway with this pretty steep slope, roughly twenty percent, um, leads down to an existing single-car garage. As I mentioned, the slope on the site is rather significant, uh, with the high point being up in this northeasterly corner, uh, roughly elevation thirty-two. Um, and your lowest point is going to be back here in the northwesterly corner at roughly eighteen. Uh, across this whole cycle in front to back, you'll see, uh, various retaining walls to help support the structures on the site. Retaining wall along the southerly side of this steep driveway, um, as well as along this back edge of sidewalk, there's a, a rather tall granite retaining wall. And then to support this, uh, raised driveway over here is a, is a pretty significant concrete and granite retaining wall. At its highest point, almost ten feet tall. Um, circumferencing the house is our concrete walkways, pretty much wrapping around the entire site. And back along, parallel to the, to the back, there's an additional, uh, retaining wall as well uh, in between, uh, the existing building and the abutters building. That's significant in height itself, roughly eight or so feet tall. Uh, behind the building is an existing pool, uh, above-ground pool, uh, with an accompanying deck. And then just various landscaping, uh, the green representing, um, either lawn, not well manicured, or various, um, plantings along the site. Uh, this, it's currently serviced, um, by all public utilities, uh, water and gas out front to the mains in Mill Street. Uh, there's overhead wires, uh, various overhead wires, uh, two providing power communications to the main building, one providing it to the garage, and then an additional, not servicing the building, but an additional overhead, uh, line coming across the property, which I'll discuss a little further, uh, further on. Uh, the sewer service, uh, currently runs out the back of the building and ties into the existing sewer, uh, sewer main, located in a fifteen-foot-wide sewer easement adjacent to the rear of the property. Here we have our construction management plan. Um, I'm, it's my understanding that the existing buildings are currently, have been demolished. The driveways are still there. The site, as my understanding, has been slightly grubbed, um, but the buildings aren't currently on the site. As I mentioned before, this overhead wire, or all overhead wires, the one serving the building as well as this one coming through the property, will have to be, uh, disconnected and in some cases relocated. Uh, you'll see in the future, the further sheets, um, this overhead wireline detected, connecting an, an existing utility pole to the rear, uh, to the, from the rear of the property to the front of the property, um, has to be relocated along with the utility poles to construct the proposed, um, building that we're proposing. We're proposing to put erosion controls as typical around the site, minimize, uh, minimize sedimentation, um, downstream sedimentation to abutting properties, as well as a security fence where possible, and a stone, uh, construction apron for construction vehicles leaving the sites. On the proposed layout plan, we're proposing to construct a four-unit, uh, townhouse-style buildings, um, approximately forty-one hundred thirty-nine square feet, roughly. Uh, we have front offset, a minimum offset, or the shortest offset, I should say, is eighteen point three feet from the street. Uh, so that allows us to have a proposed driveway to each, to each unit, which has a garage, uh, on the first level. Um, so it provides a parking space in the driveway as well as one in the garage, meeting the eight required, um, in that, in the, a Zone C or Business B, but Residential C with special permits. So we have the eight parking spaces. Um, so that's why we kind of, we laid out that building as such, given the steep, you know, drop-off in grade. This building kind of accommodates that. You'll see the various retaining walls, uh, running around the site, um, with the high point back here, roughly five feet along the back is the highest point along the back. Um, but this is just the overall, our overall layout plan, uh, just to give you a sense of the size of the building. Uh, the grading plan, um, so to minimize, um, grading, I guess, as a whole, we, that's why we, as I previously mentioned, that's why we, you know, have the, the location of the building where it is, um, minimizing fill as well, as well as accommodating for, uh, parking. Uh, the proposed retaining walls here allow for, um, access, whether that be pedestrian or vehicular, as well as drainage to some of these, uh, area drains. You'll see the back of the site, uh, after this, this wall here, it's, sheds that way as, as well over here, much like the existing site. The, the gradient just goes front to back, uh, with a, with a retaining wall along the entire back, or essentially the entire back of the property line to kind of create a level, a leveled area for residents and accommodate certain utilities. Um, and lastly, our utility sheet, um, the project will be serviced by water, sewer, um, overhead commu, all public utilities. Um, here you can kind of see relocated, uh, utility poles. Uh, there'll be one here and here, kind of shifting that overhead wire, to the north, northerly prop, towards the northerly property line to accommodate the building. Uh, we also added, propose a, uh, a utility pole in front of the building to bridge the gap between this proposed new one and the existing one down here. It was just too far of a stretch, which is located in between driveways. Stormwater controls on site, all perv, all impervious pavements are to be collected, whether that be the, the roof or the driveways. Uh, the front of the building flows will be collected by the, this, um, four-by-four-by-four concrete galley, which will also collect the driveways. Uh, from there, that, that will overflow to this, this rear dry, series of dry wells. Uh, six three-and-a-half-foot diameter dry wells, which will collect the rear roof flows as well as the overflow from System One. From System Two, uh, in big enough storms, uh, the twenty-five and the hundred-year storm, that will overflow uh, into the drain main, also located in that fifteen-foot-wide sewer easement. Proposed sewer, uh, separate, you know, sewer services for each, uh, unit will tie into one, one pipe and tie into that, uh, existing sewer main in that fifteen-foot sewer easement. And water, water and fire. Uh, there will be one two-inch, uh, type K copper fire pipe to service the four, uh, units, as well as each unit will have a separate, um, one-inch copper water service. And that's all I have for you guys today. I'll...
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate a couple of things. I think it's important that, uh, to know what the site restrictions are and why there is a skewed lot um, as far as, um, angular, as well as, um, the steep slope. I think the steep slope will be shown, uh, on the architectural plans and the stepped, can, the step unit. I think it's important also to note where the garages are. They come off. There are four garages that support two cars. And they come off the street, uh, very important. Mill Street is not a very wide street. It's in poor condition. Uh, the board's probably more familiar than I about what has gone on. It's a mixed zone. There is both Residence B, there is Business B, and there's Residence C. And across, uh, that will be shown, uh, Brian Saluti will show some photos of the neighborhood area. There's a large commercial buildings. And we looked at the site, and the site was not, is always been used residentially. It was a larger lot at one time that went out to Washington Street. But because of these steep slopes, you could not build, um, a commercial use on their own Business B. As a matter of fact, when we spoke with one of the neighbors, um, the McDonald's who live diagonally across the street, they indicated that the garage, which is at the rear of the site, was, uh, once an auto body shop and that the business was in front of it. So the whole area has been, uh, redeveloped. I know that there's been a lot of stress in that area. And that's why the design paid attention to how the garages would work. You, you have two park, two-car parking and how you access down through the site, which will be shown by, uh, the architecturals. So you come out to the rear with, um, patios. There are no decks. Uh, but you can see the amount of green space, what is existing on this from what was on there before. It was only, uh, three feet, one inch from the, from the, uh, street. And also on the left side facing, uh, it was, uh, four feet from that side. It was virtually next to that house. So with this site, with the site constraints, particularly the topography, this was, uh, designed so that the buildings would be, um, support, uh, what's going to happen is that, if I had a, um...
That is blue, it's like water.
Yeah, if I might, this, if you'll see, um...
Eighteen foot difference in slope.
Eighteen feet, yeah. And that's, that amounts to, because it's, uh, the eighteen feet amounts to a twenty percent grade change.
I walked the whole shot.
Okay. Well, I think if you walk the, well, we didn't, we didn't dig down. You couldn't get back down that.
That's coming soon.
And, and you realize that, that if you look, there's a twenty-one-foot difference between the sidelines from front to back. So that the skewed lot running along the easement impacts what you can do with a lot as well. I know that there's always a concern about parking on that street. Um, it, we met with, uh, some of the, one of the neighbors, and the neighbors indicated that there is parking on street across on the other side, and there is parking up to, that covers a portion of this property. But we think that the, uh, as we go through the pro, as we go through this with the architecturals, um, we think that by having the garages, two, two-car garages, you have an eighteen-foot, if the smallest and the least amount setback, it's twenty before, so that even if there was additional uses for the townhouses, they would still have some parking in the driveways.
Yeah, two and two.
That's, yeah, yeah. Um, Brian Saluti will go over the architectural plans.
Hi, my name is Brian Saluti. I'm the architect for the project. Uh, my office is located at fifteen New Barrett Avenue. That's in Wayman. I'm here to present the preliminary architectural plans for this proposed townhome project. This is a front elevation, uh, of the proposed townhomes, as they all appear on Mill Street, with the abutter to the left and the abutter to the right. Uh, Mill Street is a, a one-way incoming off of Washington Street, which you can see on this map here. It's Washington Street. Mill Street follows all the way and then ends up at Southern Avenue. I counted up seventeen properties on, uh, Mill Street. They're all zone Res B, with the exception of, uh, the properties out front along Washington Street, where there's a variety store on one corner, and then on the opposite side, there's a commercial building. And then shaded in blue is, uh, the property we're looking at.
Right.
And that's Business B. We're going to flip that to Res C. Project, uh, it's, uh, project is adjacent to this, uh, the variety store, as I mentioned. And you can see that the variety store has a, like, a residential component attached to it. And I'm not sure, you know, if it's a, it's almost like a single family. I don't know. I'm assuming there's one unit in there. Uh, and to the right side, you'll see a, uh, a two-story, um, single-family residence directly across the street to the two singles. And then a little ways to the left side of the two singles is a larger development condominium. I'm not sure how many units in the condominiums here, but more than a handful. So I'm well acquainted with the, uh, Mill Street neighborhood because, uh, my company recently completed project at forty-two Mill Street, which you see here. San Shulman was the developer and the owner. And, uh, I thought it was a successful project, um, all seven units sold as condominiums. Now, Mill Street has a mix of one, two, and three-story, uh, buildings. It has, also has a mix of single-family and multi-family grounds. The multi-families are either rentals or the condominium ownerships. One thing to note, though, is most of the residential buildings on Mill Street all have pitched roofs. And that's something that we're going to respect for this project. Another thing to know that's powerful enough is, uh, is that it has a steep drop-off in grade. And that occurs not only at the property we're looking at, but one, two, three, four, five properties in a row on that side of the street have an extreme drop-off. The drop-off in grade for this project is around twelve feet. You can see it in this photograph here. We're at a level with the, um, the street and the sidewalk. More tape off is where the retaining wall is. And there's like a twelve-foot drop. So it's serious drop. Change boards. So we're, we're planning on taking advantage of this grade drop by including a lower-level space. It's also access to walk-up. This building section here clearly illustrates that best. Uh, up here is the, um, the street level, and the nine feet or so down is the, and toward the back here is the walk-up area. We're going to most likely be bringing in a lot of gravel fill under the driveways, um, under the garage area, and a little toward the back of the property as well. I'm going to describe the proposed four-unit townhome building. This is basically ninety-six feet long by forty-five feet deep. Each townhome contains one thousand four hundred and eighty square feet. The square footage for the lot is over ten thousand seventy-one square feet, and the FAR is twenty-five nine, which is well below the required one point oh for a Res C. The four-unit townhome will have a colonial appearance with gable-pit roots, large dormers on the front. The entrances will be recessed in, so you have cover from the weather. The front of the building is two stories in height. That's twenty-six feet from, uh, the grade to the peak. The rear of the building is three stories in height, and that's thirty-five feet from grade to the peak. Now, this is very similar to the building that was there before. And here's a picture of it right here. So it's two stories in the front. You really don't get to see the rear, but it was a three-story in the rear. So the exterior, uh, well, I wanted to say it before I go on, um, the actual average height for this proposed, uh, building calculates out to be about thirty feet six inches, which is well below the six stories allowed for a Res C, uh, zone building. The exterior materials recommended for the project include hardy-plank platform, white PVC trim. There'll be double-hung windows and sliding glass doors. Uh, the exterior garage doors will most likely be insulated types. The main roofs and dormers, there'll be asphalt shingles. Uh, these materials I'm describing are basically compatible with the exist, existing single and multi-family dwelling on the street. Talk a little bit about the floor plans. The four, the four townhome units are typical in size and layout. The typical unit, as I just mentioned, was a thousand four hundred and eighty square feet. This, uh, this also includes a lower-level, uh, area as well. Now, the ground floor level plan located in the middle of this drawing, uh, the typical unit here is twenty-four feet wide by forty-five feet deep. Twenty-four foot width is important because you're trying to get a two-car garage alongside a, um, a front entrance, uh, area with a, with a door. So beyond the garage, we have the living, an open living area, which is the kitchen, dining, and living room. Also on this level is a, is a half-bath, sliding glass door with a small deck. Uh, the second floor level, which is to the far right, now, the typical unit on this level has three bedrooms, closets, two full baths, a wash-dry setup. And the lower level... And the lower level, you see here on the right side of the plan, a typical unit here has five hundred and fifty square feet on this level. So this would be dedicated for mechanical equipment, maybe storage, and whatever's left over could be, you know, perhaps a study or something like that. Now, these townhomes, they're going to be built in a consistent manner. They'll have concrete slabs on grade, concrete retaining walls and foundation walls. The overall superstructures will include wood firemen, the exterior walls, floors, and roofs. There's going to be a one-hour rated demising wall between the townhome units. And for fire protection, each unit will be fully sprinkled, have a fire alarm system that'll be hardwired to a main enunciator panel. There'll be two units of egresses, one at the front, one in the rear. And so that basically describes the floor plans and the elevators. Lastly, I'd just like to just briefly touch on the landscape areas. So what you're looking at here is the proposed building, just three different viewpoints. The upper two renderings show views of the front of the property. These drawings clearly show four green strips out front here. Now, these green strips, they're about three feet wide by eighteen feet long. And basically, they help make that separation between the driveways and the dwelling units themselves. So I'm suggesting maybe low shrubbery for these areas. And on the left and right sideyards, these areas are a little bigger. They're like twelve feet by twenty-four feet deep, a nice level area. Here, you might want to suggest like trees, maybe a maple tree on one end and a cherry tree on the other. And plus, there's plenty of room there for additional shrubbery or even lawn areas. Now, this photograph's pretty interesting. I took this a couple of weeks back. And this is at the property. You're looking at the rear of the property. And it looks like an arboretum field, you know? But the arboretums are rather healthy and in good shape. They're full grown. And so this rendering here, I'm suggesting perhaps we take those arboretums and take advantage of them. Run them along the rear wall of the property. So that's...
Any questions?
Just want to point out if you could, Brian, if you put the last one up, how those garages are going to be filled. You can see the, on one of the plans, the existing foundations that are there. That's the, right here, I got it. Right here is just the first, this is the lower level. And so this whole section of the lower level is filled. And that would fill in the foundation. That four would be slab-on-grade. That's how the garages work. So there's a lot of structural material that has to be brought in. This is a very expensive endeavor to do this. But we looked at it, and with the shape of the lot and the skewed configuration, and particularly the slope, we feel that after several iterations of this, this is the most, this is the most functional, the most aesthetic one that we came up with. It's only two stories, and it matches. We wanted to keep this to the height. You know, it can go six stories, which couldn't support it on this lot anyway. But I think that what we did, the attempt of the architect, he did a good job in coming up with this, so we kept the colonial nature of it. As he said, it was a similar appearance from the house that had been there since the nineteen hundreds. The reason we're here, though, is not necessarily this evening. It's on a zoning matter. And it's, we're seeking the relief again for the sideyard setbacks, which we can't meet, in the rear yard setback, which at the narrowest point is actually eleven point six, but it's measured at nine point seven, because on the back of these, that they have these, they're not a deck. I guess it's a, it's a deck. And the deck walks out. It's four feet by this, so it exceeds the three feet. So you have to take the distance and drop it down from the deck back. So it's, to the foundation, it's eleven at the worst. And in this one, it's almost, I think it's sixteen or eighteen. So we don't meet the setbacks on the site as far as, all of the setbacks, because the front one, even though we meet the eighteen feet from the sidewalk back, it doesn't meet the twenty-five. The lot size was in existence prior to the adoption of zoning in the city. So I think that the board, rather than the variances, could make a finding on that, because it's pre-existing and non-conforming. And although it's twice the size of a Business B parcel, it's less than, it's four thousand square feet short approximately from meeting the requirements for lot size. I can go over a couple of things. I don't want to take a long time tonight. I know that, that Chapter forty-eight, Section ten, and Chapter three-seventy-five, Section nine point two, for variances requires petitions for variance must satisfy the following conditions to create a hardship in the construction of the proposed residential development related specifically to the site-specific circumstances relating to soil shape and topography that affect the structure. And the enforcement of those requirements on this site do create a, both a financial and actual hardship in construction and use of the site for the residential purpose it was, has been used for, even though it's in a Business B zone. It was a two-family or a duplex property. We're adding two additional units. Even if we redo certain things, we wouldn't, wouldn't affect the front or rear setback. And particularly with the garages, we feel that that will meet the requirement for the parking. I will say that we did have an opportunity to meet with, actually, I sent notices to Director Butters with the copies of plans and a summary of what we were going to present. And we also met with the residents who are directly across the street at twenty-one Mill Street, Sharon and Kevin McDonald, who I see here tonight. We had, they expressed to us last Thursday evening their concerns with development on the street, dealing with on-street parking, snow removal, construction-related impacts. Now, I know that when this matter goes before the planning board, as it's required to do, for a special permit, many of the things we presented here tonight, more than just zoning-related, will be taken into consideration to deal with that. I agree that, looking at the street, that we think that if we can construct that first part, that all activity could take place for the construction. A lot of the, you know, they wouldn't be blocking the streets. But I do think the construction management plan, which the city has been requiring lately on these things, even for larger projects in this project, it would be appropriate to do that. It would control a lot of the things. Because we do note that, and the street is not in good condition. We think that because the water lines are all coming this way, it's likely that a good portion of it will require to be all repaved anyway in front of this for those circumstances. The relocation of the utility lines is something that the utility companies are going to foster into change. And we know that there's been a lot of construction on that street, and it has created hardship for some of the residents. We understand that. We hope that we can develop that, you know, develop a plan that will satisfy and control the construction in that the inspectional services department does enforce those things. So with that, we just ask for your favorable consideration for these that will not, you know, deviate from the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And I do think they meet the statutory criteria for variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Can any questions at all?
It's going to be condominiums?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. Townhouse condominiums.
Second question for the architect on the side of the building. Do you have a drop-down, drop-off, see if they're tying the wall at a certain point of the slope?
Yeah.
So is this just going to be opening? And how are you going to have security issues, safety issues, away the slope, away, and then the wall have to go down?
Are you talking, are you talking one side?
Oh, two sides.
Okay. Yeah, and it's a slight slope. I don't know if it's a slope.
One to ten, but that's off the top of my head. I mean, I'd say for those walls, some type of fence may be deemed necessary for that variation.
I mean, your children might play along with that. First grass, can you get grass there on the sides? And if the slope didn't make drop-off in both sides?
It's sloped front to back, if you look. So, yeah. But, so, yeah, it'd be a concern this way. But, but there still is that height difference that way. So, yeah, I can see some type of fence. Yeah, I mean, especially with some of the, I think, five, six feet, I would deem it almost necessary.
Yeah, because then you made the wall, and then the drop-off after the wall.
Exactly. On the outside, yes, on the outsides of those walls, it's lower grade outside the property. And then from here, this is higher grade, this is lower grade. So even that divide...
Are you going to fill in those in the back? Like, are you selling gravel?
Yeah. You can see that it's raised up. You can see it's raised up here from the elevation of the easement. And, you know, is a couple of things that, the idea was to create a plateau here and to transition this. The other, this is not steps, that's a step foundation. I learned that. But we are able to put some steps in the retaining wall, so you can transition in the event that there's, people have to get back up to the main street for some purposes. Those are all construction details.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call. First one? Who I possibly?
Repaying?
Repaying.
We reviewed this build for the Front Harvest Project, CBA twenty-two dash fifty-seven, and our comments are as follows. Grading and drainage. The applicant is required to perform soil tests during construction to verify the underlying soil condition. If application to the stormwater management system because of a differing soil condition shall be submitted for review and approval. A maintenance plan shall be included in the condominium association document and recorded at non-parking residential heat. Apply for drain permit from the department of work before construction. Four, the proposed infiltration system violates the setback requirement for the drainage line in the building's underneath. Five, one week prior to main land disturbance activity, the applicant shall conduct an onsite inspection for the city of Quincy and/or the city's designated representative to observe the erosion controls installed at the site and review the erosion controls anticipated to be employed during construction. The city of Quincy and/or the city's designated representative shall also observe the construction of the stormwater management. Seven, the applicant should confirm that adfoot water quality is provided for the overall site and provides TSS removal worksheets of various flow pack. The water. One, perform water flow tests with the city's water department. Two, check existing water service at the connection with the mains. All abandoned blocks and valves shall be removed. Three, connect to the city's mains with one two-inch pipe for pipe service and one two-inch pipe for domestic service. The two-inch domestic pipe can be breached off inside the property during the renewal year. Four, the applicant should conform, I'm sorry, should confirm the appropriate connection, tapping screen and N and T with the DPW prior connection and structure. Sewer. One, the existing pipes and manholes on the street should be inspected with the television three and post-compartment in order to check the condition of the system. The television report and video clip shall be submitted to our office for settlement. Two, check the existing sewer service at the back of the sideline. All abandoned structures should be removed or filled with dense grain and stone. Three, we request that the sewer service be connected through the existing sewer manhole at Mill Street. In general, number one, the existing roadside curb should be reset or replaced prior to the construction of the new sideline. Two, install dripping monuments to delineate the drainage line and hollowed out the area. The monument shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Three, submit construction management plan prior to the issuance of a verb of a building permit. Four, submit full design plan for retaining wall for the review prior to construction. Five, submit AutoCAD file for the project before applying building permit. The file should be in mass state plan coordinate and coordinate system, and preferably in Quincy's standard data layer. Six, the entire proposed stormwater and sewer system shall be cleaned and freshed plus prior to the final settlement. Seven, upon completion of the project, submit a stamped affidavit from a registered professional engineer that all the utilities, water, sewer, and drain are constructed as designed and no illicit connections are found on the completed project plan. Eight, upon completion of the project, as-built plan showing all utilities, building footprints, and finishing grade need to be submitted along with the AutoCAD file. And as-built plans shall be in the mass state plan coordinate system. The developer and/or contractor shall contact the design engineer or surveyor prior to the installation of foundation and utility to allow for the proper inspection and data collection for the as-built plan. For other information and questions, please decide.
Is there anyone else on the side who can step forward and name their address, please?
Kevin McDonald, twenty-one Mill Street.
No, Wayman.
Sorry.
No, we're going to take a call.
Yeah, I hear you. Kevin McDonald, twenty-one Mill Street. And I'm sorry to say, I hate to be here. Last time I was here was two years ago, fighting over down the street with just this architect designed. Right now, Mill Street is starting to look like a condominium complex. It's about time to change the name of Mill Street, say Mill Street Condominiums, because that's what it's getting down to. We lived in our neighborhood for twenty-one years. My wife has cried the last three weeks over this situation. We met with these gentlemen the other night. We explained some details to them. They're trying to work with us, but unfortunately, I think the site is just too big for what they're trying to propose. There was a two-family there before. When the gentleman bought the unit, it was a quick seal because they had financial problems. So he actually knew what he was stepping into when he bought the property. So to ask for a hardship situation in order to grow, put these four units in, it's not even hurting us. It's also hurting the community. Letters did go out. I got one with a blueprint. Unfortunately, the other names that live around us are all Asian community. They don't understand the English word. So they might have got their letter and not paid attention to it. There was no community meeting to discuss this. I am pretty much talking for everybody on that Mill Street situation right now. And I had to do this two years ago. And I'm getting kind of tired of it. So I'm hoping that you guys do not approve. They're looking for their adjustment.
What are you looking for?
I'll be happy with the two-family back again, to be very honest with you. It's just the street is just too overwhelmed. There is no parking. There is no snow removal.
They get eight spots.
They might have eight spots on the property.
They get eight sixteen, dude. They get four free units.
Yes. But ninety percent of the people that own a garage don't use both spots. They fill half of it with junk, because they're condominiums. They don't have any place to move their shit. Excuse my French.
But they did. Farm floor is all their problem.
Basically. Number two is the footprint is just too large for the street. There's absolutely no parking on Mill Street. The left side of the street is for the commercial use of that building that's on the left-hand side. The dairy farm takes up ninety percent of the street during the day hours. City workers go there. No, plain keno. It's the most keno hotspot in Quincy, okay? So there's constantly no parking on the street. And now they're going to put four more units up, and they're going to take away those parking spaces that are out in front of that property. up, and they're gonna take away those parking spaces that are out in front of that property, you're gonna limit it down to maybe seven cars on the left side of Mill Street, and then when these people back out of their driveway, they're gonna be hitting those cars that are parked there, because the street's not big enough. If, if you look, um, try to find a print, um, up here, it's a street lineup.
Yep.
Okay, so Mill Street is on one corner, one side, okay, that's one side parking, all right? I met with the director two years ago, and we decided to make it one-way street, and no parking on one side. Okay, so the parking is on the odd side. Now, that odd side parking is where that commercial building is, which is like a halfway home, physical therapy and things like that, they take up that whole side street during the day with their parking. Now, when these cars pull out of their driveway, if there's new development, they're gonna have a very tight corner to turn, because the street is so small that the cars parked on the other side.
Even if it's parked, two cars can go by it.
Two cars cannot go by there.
I would say, yeah, two cars.
No, no way, no way. I barely get my truck in my driveway, I take the whole street to turn my truck into the driveway, that's how small the street is. It's been totally torn up by all these developments on the street, okay, and I'm the one living with it, you know, you guys are going home to a nice clean street, you know, cocktails at night.
Brand new street.
Yeah, thank you, brand new, you must know somebody.
It's been two years.
But what I'm trying to say is, we've already been through all this development on this street for six years now, I've lived with contractors yelling and swearing at my wife, all right, I've lived with contractors parking in the street and don't give two craps over their parking, all right?
The right street.
Huh?
Never mind.
Oh, I agree, I've already explained this to the, the architect, that it will go down that way on my property, I only have three spaces in front of my house, all right, and I try to, you know, keep my cars there that I use, they're interested, they're insured and everything, I have the right to use that street, but they start bringing in more development, where are these people gonna park? Where the framers gonna park when they stop working till seven o'clock at night, they're supposed to, they're supposed to stop at six, because it happened, and Mr. Dukel will, Dukel will back me a hundred percent on that.
Yeah, it's a six.
Okay? So it's a horror show, and I have to deal with this again, it shouldn't be right, I'd be more than happy with two family going right back to where it was, the gentleman should've looked at that way when he bought the property. It's been sitting there desolate for the past maybe year now.
At least, yeah.
Okay, and it's just too much, even Mr. McCarthy would, would back me a hundred percent on this one, there was never any mention to the ci, to the people around the neighborhood that this is going on. He never received any notice, all he received was an engineering plan, and that was all he got, this is all news to him too. So they didn't really plan this out good to let the community know what they were trying to do.
I, I thought it looked good, I thought it was cleaning up that whole street.
Well, so then, so then the seven, the nine beside me and the six down the, seven down the street me.
I know what they did down there.
So right now, we have twenty-three condominiums on Mill Street, twenty-three.
But condominiums are owned, they're owned, they're not rented, they're owned.
No matter who's living there, it's still twenty-three condominiums on Mill Street.
But, you know, a problem should differ, a problem is you know who you're gonna get, condo, at least the guys have, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars invested in the property, so they care.
You might be right on that, I'm a general contractor too, okay, I'm, I'm in the business. What I'm trying to say to you is, it's just the development on Mill Street is too much, it is, you gentlemen have to look at it that way.
It is.
All right?
It's been a lot of work, tons of work.
Tons of work, I mean, the sewer system can handle the pressure.
It gets tired.
So it gets tired, all right, and if the other people were here that could understand the English language, they would also, might speak also, but they're not, because they're not English-speaking, speaking people, I haven't had enough time communicating with them on my street, so I'm just hoping that you guys decide to go against the situation in here, and Mr. McCarthy will probably back me on that too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed on the side? Step forward, name and address when you get here.
Hi, I'm Sharon McDonald, twenty-one Mill Street, and some of my issues are, like we said, there's been a lot of townhouses built, it started with six, it's a very small-sized street that we're on, six down the end, nine right next to us, that tower over our backyard, we have absolutely no privacy left with the nine towering over us, seven diagonally crossed, that got approved because they tried to go for eight, and we fought them, we were at every meeting trying to fight that, and they dropped it down one, and somehow that got approved, so we get seven down the street, and now we've got another four, and what is terrible about the townhouses, it sounds wonderful, they look wonderful, but you never see your neighbor. They pull into their garage, they go up into their house, never see them, they're not out mowing their lawn, they're not out having cookout, so we've got nine right next to us, and they could be in this room right now, and I couldn't even tell you who they are, because I never see them. It takes away from the community, the residential feel, the, it's just, it's just a negative thing, it may look nice, you drive down the street, see all these nice clean buildings, but you've taken away from the community what Quincy was. Couple of things I want to bring up is, the civil engineer report from, I'm not sure how you say it, Chang Song, says right on, it was a letter dated July twenty-second, the proposed infiltration system violates the setback requirements for the property line and the building foundation. Further on, it says that he recommends that they tie into the sewer system on Mill Street. With all the projects that have been built on Mill Street, we also have a big, um, nursing home on Washington Street, just, just a little, like, block away, and with all these developments, they kept saying that that sewage line that's behind the property can't handle anymore, but how are these people keep saying that they're tying into that sewage line? There was a big issue with the nursing home about that sewage line, and all the neighbors came to the meeting saying that they're getting sewage back up into their houses and into their property, how are they gonna say they're gonna tie into the sewage line, when it's already overwhelmed? With everything on our, down our street, I can't imagine our water lines can handle it, I couldn't even tell you where our fire hydrant is, I don't know where we have a fire hydrant, but all these extra properties, I think it's just such a, a safety issue as well. A couple of things that we did bring up with the developers was, they were talking about the property and the downgrade, and they showed, one, one of the pictures they showed, like a retaining wall kind of look, like, I forgot, like here and here, and my husband brought up, so if there's a fire at the beginning of, in the, front of that property, you go out back, you've got retaining walls around three sides of the property, how do you get out of the property? There's a fire in the front.
Unless we just, just say that.
Yeah, you're stuck back there.
Put steps on the side so you can get out of there.
Yeah, they said you're stuck back there.
I know.
And the other issue is, while, while they were there, the driveway are talking about parking, they've got these garages, but if a car parks here, there is not enough room to back out and make that swing. The reason it came about of the parking on one side was, when the cars used to park on both sides, a fire truck couldn't even make it down the street, it is a really narrow, beat-up street that needs to be reded, and I just think our street can't handle it, handle anymore, that's all.
Anyone else? Council?
Yes, sir. Dave McCarthy, forty-eight Whitney Road, um, I'll go along with Kevin McDonald, about ninety-nine percent, he said a hundred, but I'll, I'll ease it back to ninety-nine percent. I, um, I do agree with him, um, Mill Street, I was in here for the complex to the left of the McDonald's, the big one that was run by a, a gentleman who lived up, and I think he was out of Newton, but when I first came on, which is six, seven years ago, uh, that was, um, a catastrophe in regards to, in regards to site management, trucks, fences falling down, the whole bit, I get it, people couldn't get out of work, you know, couldn't get out of their driveway, go to work. The next project came in, you know, when it's further down the street, it gives a little more breathing room, as Kevin said, off of that corner, but I'd like to see it either two, maybe three, reduced a little bit, um, only because he's right, um, that dairy mat in that corner is always hopping, you know, and I go down Mill Street on purpose a lot to, to take a look at, just to see the, what we're putting in, just to take a look at what he's talking about. If there are a couple of cars on each side and they're not staggered, uh, you might not get down there, especially at the beginning where the McDonald's live, I think they're at number twenty-one, um, but, um, I'd like to see this a little bit, uh, smaller, you know, two or three, and some more green space, I know, uh, board member Chin had, had mentioned about kids playing on grass, and that, that, that entire street now, um, you know, I know it's rez A, business B, rez B, um, you're bordering the city, uh, and I know a lot of things can happen in those, in those zoning areas, but, um, Mill Street has taken a lot of activity in the last couple of years, so I'm all for the condo, I'm all for brightening it up, the, i- i- you know, a blighted spot that, you know, remained, however, remained there for a while, building before they, they, yeah, and, and, you know, it cleans up the street, but again, um, a little breathing room.
Kind of finishes up.
Yeah, and, but some breathing room, a little breathing room because of the, of the, the, the complex next door i- is very big, uh, the seven units, I don't think they really affected that much because they're down, they go down towards Pond Street, um, you know, but again, what's to say, uh, someone else on that street sells a couple of parcels and we come right back here again, and as Kevin mentioned, it's, it's, it'd be all condos, so I'm, I'm looking for a little leniency, I think, in regards to the size of what they're doing, um, the, the only people that I've spoken to are the McDonald's, I know that the notices go out, um, uh, on time by the, by the inspectional services folks, but, uh, the McDonald's are pretty much maybe a, there's maybe another rez A, maybe a third rez A there at the beginning, um, folks that are left on that street, um, besides what Sharon mentioned about neighbors going into their garages and not knowing them and et cetera. Other than that, it's, 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 it's a lot of condominiums on Mill Street, and it, a great project, I thought Mr. Saluti laid it out really well, uh, and it looks, the landscaping looks nice, everything utilized, those abovites, et cetera, but I, I, I think it does turn into kind of like Wall Street there a little bit, you know, you're gonna look at, at a, a lot of things that are very high on each side, and you're, and you're kind of wiping out the rez A, whatever's left of the rez A. Also too, Mr. Johnson, uh, did supply me with plenty of material to look at way ahead, and I got it to the McDonald's as soon as I received it, because I knew they're gonna be impacted being across the street and pretty much being the lone wolf, uh, on the, on the, on the street, so, um, I hope we can make some adjustments. Thank you.
I know, Kevin, the only thing I was thinking, they have four spots for a unit, and you cut on taking time without the street, you know, and if people come over, rock the street, that's all I'm thinking.
Yeah, but I think, I think that corner store and that activity, there seems to be cars, or, even with this, there's nothing there right now, there's cars up that street. You go around the corner, you gotta be careful because it gets, it gets tight, I don't know if people is parked, they're walking down the street.
Where are they gonna park if, if there's an outhouse, where they're gonna park? When that gets used.
This is a tough street for that.
Oh, yeah, where they gonna park? They're gonna park there, and that gotta be a park in front of someone's house, they're gonna have to move something, where they go? Where?
In front of my house.
Probably already.
How about in your house, you got a new street.
Probably already there, right?
Yes, they are, that's why I'm sitting here talking to you right now.
Yeah. They gotta find a keynote spot, but I know, I know, I know, I just, when I first looked at this, I, I really, I thought it was beautiful, I thought I cleaned up that whole street, get rid of that green light and whole area, they got eight cars for a unit, and four, four parking spaces for a unit, I really, I thought it was, and I, and I know construction stinks, it stinks out of the neighborhood, I get it.
Can I speak to that a little bit? Not over there.
Oh.
John Roderfeld, sixty-two, Grandwall Road, when I saw this, I, I remember all the Mill Street projects, the first Mill Street project, Council of the Forest represented the ward then, and then the second Mill Street project, we had Council McCarthy. When I first saw this, I thought, Mr. McDonald, this might be your house, you're the only one who deserves a variance, you know, and if this isn't your house, then there's no way this one deserves this, he is a hardship just having to live on this street, you would have to think, probably those cars that are parking on this street now are cars that are visiting those people in the nine and the seven units, so, and the other thing that you're saying that, even if these are condos, people rent out condos, just because you make something a condo, doesn't mean it can't still have tenants, so, you know, this is, right, like, a little bit over ten thousand square foot lot?
They can't afford that, you know, you can't, you can't rent, we have eight hundred rent, and they're gonna rent it out, can't afford it.
They already are renting them.
Well, and the bottom line is that, like, you know, the rent that they charge up at Deco in Western Chestnut is outrageous, and people are paying it, okay, so people, and when we saw that person come from Los Angeles, she actually said she thinks Quincy's wonderful, that's because, you know, Los Angeles really sucks, um, but bottom line is that I really feel bad for the poor people that live on Mill Street, because they've gone through so much, and so much, and so much, and I'm sure the developer, who's a good developer, will come back here with other projects, you don't have to approve all his projects, and when he comes back for the next one, you're gonna approve that one, you know, but I mean, you, you know, it, I kind of don't feel bad for the squanton people that much anymore, thinking like what the Mill Street people have to go through, but the reality is, is that, you know, it is so unfair to Mr. and Mrs. McDonald, so when you vote tonight, um, or continue this, you know, so, I mean, it's just, we, the terrible thing is this, is, I like to stand up here sometimes and approve the developers and say, we need the new growth, we need the new growth, because we do need the new growth, we need the new taxes, the stock market went down five percent today, so we need, we need new growth, but we need smart new growth, and we don't need a whole bunch of people to come up here and, and say this isn't good, because you guys on the board are supposed to protect the people and decide what's good and what's not good, and I do trust the people on the board, I think you all do, um, as good as job as you can, thank you.
I apologize again, call, and it, and it's, it's got, I mean, you gotta clean up that, you gotta clean up that, and I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if you can put all that money into three units.
Um, that's, that's one of the problems, as far as hardship can be financial and otherwise, other, I, I just.
Yes, speak.
Oh, I thought, I thought I was just gonna point out a couple things, that what was required by, uh, the engineering department, one of the things that they required was that construction management plan, which deals with all of those matters, I just want to point it out.
And, and it does, you gotta get on the property, you gotta bring your trucks in, you gotta get on the property, isn't it? Stop. It wouldn't be guaranteed that everything's got a, you know, a higher due.
Well, I, I recall, there's one of them, I, I don't know if it was, it was all, they were, maybe it was bad, the voters enforcement, they're subcontractors, and they're contracting not to be, to find those.
That was the unit next door to us, the nine unit.
Right.
Yes.
I don't know how that worked out.
You shut the job down?
Right.
Nightmare.
It was a nightmare, not only a nightmare.
Nightmare, nightmare.
I don't, you know, no matter how they are, the architect is, you don't know who you're gonna hire, and once you hire these people, no matter if you have structural management, a manager on site, or anything like that, no matter how, you auto, you, you hire Spanish framers, and they come in, and they always tell you, I don't speak English, and they keep on hitting the nail gun until seven-thirty at night, and then the alarm is seven to six, I know it, I do it.
But I think, I think Mr. Dukel was pretty adamant the voters enforcement down there.
And he was adamant, and then once again, they broke it, you know what I mean?
Especially with the delivery stuff.
Yes, it took so long, so, you know, it's just something.
As, uh, Mr. Roderfeld said after Margaret, and, uh, it was a, uh, it was a disaster at the beginning, they got better, but it still was a disaster.
I know, I know.
And then it really got over when we got on forty-two, which I don't think was as bad, but we tried to keep them off because it's a, it's a, it's not a big street, it's...
Yeah, because I, I think the night that the fellow came in and testified, he was talking about putting stuff on Pond Street.
How do you keep them up, sir? How do you keep them up?
I think they dropped the police, shut that job down.
I know, but how do you, how do you keep them up here, this side here?
Are you sure?
Huh? Daily files.
But I would like to meet with me before it's like, we have a lot more.
I know, I'm just asking this, Mr. Con, how do, how do you, how do you control?
We set it all costs, if it's down, the cost is like. Well, the city's got much better, it's got such an issue with the site protection, the water control, the fire control, the lighting.
Well, I'm undecided right now, but I, I thought this was a beautiful project, I thought I would love it.
I guess one alternative is to make it small, so. Maybe come with a hurry, I guess. But I don't, I don't have a solution, I don't have a complete answer. And that will be my attempt.
Three units, a block of units. I don't know how the financial work out, but.
I need to stay inside the cost, being with the other very expensive units, so degrade the, uh, the lot, but I, I will be in favor of three units. Uh, if they, and I think it would help with the side, just to get the side access, and what's going on with the side, it's very narrow and very smoky. I'm not comfortable with the access to the lower part of the site, the way that's considered present, so I would consider three units.
My concern is, hey, let's talk about snow, I don't know where the hell the company would do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you guys gotta go out on the Mill Street. My thought is if those units are sized down to three units, you're gonna have no side set that problems. You have a spot that you can put snow, you may actually even have more room for another guest parking spot if we be in, and I think there's plenty of parking per unit um on site, but I just said, push it, you know, ask them for the, the variances on all four sides, and I get the financing of it. Um, it is a lot, based upon what you're picking up, a little more landscape, a little more green space and spots that put snow and not have it side by side, edge to edge, foot to edge.
So I guess the answer is no one for.
Yeah, I, I, I just want to respond, um, yeah, I understand, I think that three units may not reach the 25 in either side, but it would be closer um to that 20, and it would allow maybe four, they're only 24 feet wide, we could adjust that a little bit too as far as the side. I understand the comments of the board, I, I do think that the construction management plan that was required by the engineering department and what has been enforced in other ways is a new mechanism that the inspectional service has put in and they, they do enforce it. But um, it, you know, it is a narrow street, no one's denying that, there are problems, and I know it's a very complex neighborhood, multi-use, so that um, you know, if the board is willing to give, uh, do it for three units, um, I still would have a rear and a front setback requirement, and I'm not sure what the back would be, would, you know, it still wouldn't meet those.
I get that, I get that, I get that, and it's gotta be cleaned up, and if you could bring back the, I think, three, three units, I think we'd all be looking at it fairly.
Well, I can, I can make the agreement now and we can do it, unless you want.
See a set of plans.
Subject to the plans.
Yeah, why don't we, uh, we're not gonna vote on it, we'll see a set of plans. Why don't we, uh, for next meeting, it's, uh, we could go more, not 25, uh, 27, we gotta go. October 11th, can you get the man, get him, how many, the week ahead of time, October? First one, you get a few weeks to read.
Yes. Thank you.
No, 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 we had October 11th, October 11th. May motion of October 11th, make him, make that three units.
Chairman Regatta, case number 22 dash 57, I'll have your name, Chairman. Variance to construct four units on the premises number 44, and make a motion to be scheduled October 11th.
On the motion, stand out all in favor? Aye, 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 aye. President of the Senate.
Thank you.
Do you want to go? No, because it's really done now, we kind of, we got to clean up that. All right, uh, Gabe, who are you, Gabe, Councilor?
Yeah.
What are you waiting on?
Mayor's app. His app, uh, asset bet and uh, Curlew.
Over there, all of them, you're saying two, no.
I agree, it was three.
I thought I missed one.
Yeah, Councilor, I was gonna punch you.
All right. Now you want asset bet. We all set, case number 22 57, no, 22 61, I don't know, 42 61. 22 61, I want, Mayor's app. You have a decision, you have anything on Mayor's app? Come on up, please, Mayor's app, you Mayor's app?
Yes, yes.
Oh, come on.
Hello?
Edmund.
Name and address, all right?
Yeah, Edmund Ossalarri, 28, Mayor's app.
All right, can I let you make out what your name is?
Yes, so we did meet with the neighbors and I want to thank them for, you know, address, showing the concerns and asked some questions. We're all over the plans, we explained everything, and now we come to an understanding that we're uh okay with the proposed.
If I may be recognized.
Yes, name and address, please.
Name's J.D. LaRosa, 47 Rando Hill Road, Springfield, Vermont. I'm speaking on behalf of my sister Elizabeth LeFer, who's at 34 Mayor's app.
Okay.
Um, we did have an opportunity to meet, I believe you, the board is uh in possession of a letter dated August 30th. Um, we'd like to withdraw that letter, and at this point, we'll stay undecided on this and leave it to the knowledge of the board.
All right, so did you come up with any resolution at all?
Well, we, we, we believe that what they propose should work, uh, and that the view, while obstructed, will not be, um, will be partially obstructed, so, but we can live with that.
Yeah, it happened to me. Not evening. But, okay, okay, we just need to do a vote now, so why don't we uh make a motion on that? Everyone spoke, everyone did anything, we have a chance to try to.
Mr. Chairman, Regatta, case 22 dash 61. Edmund Ossalarri, good guy. For a variance to build a one and a half story addition and two additional parking places on the premises under 28, Mayor's app funded, I make a motion to grant a requested variance.
On the motion, stand out all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
More, more than any to extend him, not within.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Four of us. Four of us.
Four zero. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for meeting, and thank you for speaking, and thank you for hanging in tonight, I'd always be. Hour at 91, asset bet, right? Uh, case number 22 61, Brian Travis, a variance, add a 10-foot addition on driveway side of the home on the premises number 91.
How are you? Good, good, I'm Brian Travis, I'm trying to do a 10-foot addition on my driveway.
Hold up, hold up, take it up, we gotta hear here, there's no mic.
Trying to do a 10-foot addition on my driveway side, uh, just trying to expand, uh, add another bathroom upstairs and expand my bedroom. Family's getting bigger, uh, not trying to leave Quincy. Um, and then also expand my mud, have a mudroom with a door on the side, okay?
I see what you're trying to do, you're bringing that with 17 sevens.
17 seven, yeah, exactly.
You're only gonna have seven seven on that?
Yeah.
I think, I think you're really squeezing that side a little bit, but I don't know, because you look what he feeds, we got two more feet over here, that's probably 97.
That would be 97, that'd be great.
Would it work?
Yes, it would definitely work with what I have drawn, yeah, it definitely would work.
So, guys, just looking at the driveway side, it's like, and it's only going half of the house.
Yeah, it's not the full length of the house, it is not the full length of the house, no.
Half house, I was trying to make a statement, but Quincy's for the neighbors, like, seven seven. Yeah, so you know, if you have a couple of feet there.
And I'd keep my, I'd still be, no.
Yeah, all right.
I'd still be able to hold my driveway, I'd still be able to fit plenty of cars in the driveway.
Right, and I just want to make sure that it's a build, you gotta build with that.
Yeah.
And uh, Council, I spoke with him when we stopped, so Council, you know, uh.
Yeah, I, I, I talked to both neighbors, there's two neigh, you know, they wrote a couple of letters, uh, the Travis family's been there for a while, he's got two little kids, and I think it's great, he's trying to maneuver to uh, to make it all happen, you know, uh.
They can be ready back.
I, I, my suggestion was to uh just uh go back and uh talk a little bit more with the, especially with the neighbor to the left. See if we can squeeze a little bit more, maybe talk about a fence, I mean, all, all the houses, they're all pretty close. And just make the right adjustments so they could have a mutual agreement like the uh, the Mayor's app people who just left.
Right, right, so, so take two feet off that, around 10 feet from the house, I think that.
Right.
There, everybody.
Right.
But even with the two feet, you make it all work.
And, and I, I planned on uh, on getting together with uh both uh Mr. Fontana or the other neighbor, Brian, and just uh going through a few things, maybe changing the door a little bit, the stairs were towards the door. Give them as much room as we can and, and, and make sure it works for this guy too, so.
So the eight feet, eight feet would work with everything?
I think so, but I don't know about the neighbors, I, you know, I want to throw that by them.
So what do you want to do, come back?
Yeah, I'd like to come back, I'd like to have a little, yeah, I think we can clear it up.
Let me see if anyone wants to speak here.
Okay.
Everyone, everyone kind of knows who you're doing, you want to like that, let's see, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor?
I wanted to speak quickly.
I just want to thank Council McCarthy for being here all night. I mean, we truly, you know, are lucky to have someone like Council McCarthy here advocating for the clients. And the clients are, not the developers, the clients are the taxpayers and the people who live in the city of Quincy. So, um, I just wanted to stand up and give Council McCarthy some props. And I'm in favor of um people staying in this city with their family who have been here and expanding and making their single-family houses adequate, so there's enough room for them to live, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Does anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call, third call, I'll find whoever's closing. Power's fine, we have reviewed this in the middle and have no comments at this time. We said an asset bet, Nancy Croft.
She thought the addition was going on her side.
All right, I'm just saying, she's a, she wrote a letter here, she's a, she's, she's, you guys on my side, it's not. Is there anyone who falls to the wrong side and wants to, first off, second call, we're called for. Can you make a motion to come back on 25, 27?
27, you're locked over?
No.
Mr. Chairman, Regatta, case number 22 dash 60, Brian Travis, for a variance to add a eight-foot addition to the driveway side of the home on the premises number 91, I'll propose, I make a motion to have the hearing booked for the 27 of, second.
On the motion, stand out all in favor? Aye, 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 aye. President of the Senate's agenda. Curlew and Exon, DBA 22 65, Keith Hinsman for a variance to construct a new mudroom and a covered porch on the premises 46 Curlew Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the. Keith Hinsman, 47, Kim Burma Street in Hall, Massachusetts. Here with me tonight is Steve Donovan, owner of 46 Curlew Road, he was there with his wife Lori and their children.
He's 10 minutes to find that.
Yeah.
It's wicked frustrating, it's on the corner, and so.
You're never on that wrong street.
But that's because our mailing address is 48 clover, and so some, and some of our utilities is 48 clover, and some of our utilities are 46 Curlew. Actually, when we bought the house, it was, it was like, it was really hard to figure out.
It's from Margaret's, sir.
What's that?
It's from Margaret's, sir.
46 Curlew.
Oh, God.
Yes, sir.
So why didn't it spring in here?
Well, I think we did, we did label it as 46 Curlew, but, because that's what the city jacket has it, but the mailing address and the mail will only come at 48 clover.
Now, the lady did, she showed, the mail box is on I Street, so that's wrong.
Well, that's what the mail, when I first got, when I first bought the house, that's what they told us.
That's four guys going through so much hassle because no one knows where he lives.
That's wicked hard, it's, it gets wicked confusing, so we do, we always have to go through it like, I'm not shady, we have two addresses because it's the only way to describe where we are, so.
Oh, it's a problem, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, quite all right, uh, so uh, we'd like to construct a mudroom uh that would face Curlew Road.
Yep.
And uh, the required setback at Curlew Road is 25 feet. The existing setback to the existing house is 27 feet, and the proposed setback from Curlew Road to the new mudroom and porch would be 17 feet. Uh, really just asking for a modest mudroom with a small porch to cover your head as you get in the door. Uh, proposed mudroom is 63 square feet, proposed porch is 42 square feet. Um, and the proposed mudroom and porch are shown on the plot plan, and then you can see the look in appearance of the mudroom on the architectural plan. Exactly. And I'll let Steve uh speak.
Hi, Steve Donovan, uh, 46 Curlew Road or 48 clover road, whichever you prefer. Um, I also, I did speak to all my neighbors, and uh, if you, it might be a little confusing, you look, uh, submitted uh, support from two, twice from 52 Curlew Road, that's because my neighbor sold the house and moved as we, as we supplied this. So, so, you know, I'm not creating new people.
No, 60, yeah, 60.
Yeah, but it was Colleen Ryan, and then we just, uh, someone just moved in, and I got his support as well, I'm not sure if that made it in, uh, Lee Brandenburg.
Yeah.
Yeah, but so that you know that why there's two, 52, um, and he's the only abutter on that side. Um, and my neighbors across the street, they both wished me well, I didn't get anything signed from them, but I let them know and there wasn't any ill will. There is a neighbor behind me who this wouldn't affect, but he's abandoned that property, um, and so he's not really there. Yeah. I thought about it, but instead I'm building a mudroom.
Yeah, I see.
Yes, sir.
I have no question. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Anyone want to speak in favor? First off, the call, third call, Council. Based on home and a reasonable allowance, 130.
No, I, I couldn't find the house either for a while, you know, you know, I don't know what's going on, but now I'm thinking about, maybe that'd generate more votes down there than what I want. We got nine addresses in one house and, you know.
It wasn't the same guy, right?
No, it wasn't the same guy, 20 years ago, and we won't get into that story. But um, I, I, I just had one question, I, and I, and maybe I missed it, when you're, when the mudroom gets extended to the right side of the house, how close are we, how close are we uh away from the 17? 17, okay, no, um, and the house that was abandoned, you're talking one that's to the left, really?
Yes, sir, yeah, it's like, the one that has raccoons going in and out of it.
Yeah, 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 I know.
The raccoons up there.
No, no, I know, it's right next to the tuckers, right on the corner, one bit and right, right.
Yes, sir, I believe the neighbor at the point to me is gonna purchase that.
No, that's all, I'm, I'm in support, it's, it's, it's good, and um, he can take care of.
Support the raccoon?
Yeah, I'm in support of the raccoons and 46 and 48.
Council, thank you for hanging in all night.
Thank you.
I know you're the only one that does that, and so, thank you. Ding ding. All right, anyone else wants to speak in favor, last call, all up out of here in close, I have a letter here from the DPDW, we we have reviewed this in the middle with the Department of Project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided, first call, second call, third call, now. Have you done?
In favor.
Could I have a motion?
Chairman, Regatta, case 22 dash 65, Keith Hinsman, for a variance to construct a new mudroom and a covered porch on the premises number 46 Curlew, make a motion to grant a request of variance. Second.
On the motion, stand out all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye.
Thank you.
Well, I was gonna start with 42 units, and then we went down to the mudroom.
President of the Senate's agenda. DBA 22 66, for screws for special funds to construct Black's family daycare on the premises number 36, where we're at. The African representative.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the board, oh, actually, it's not to construct.
Look, this is what it says in the, I guess, when you requested, but you are, because you're putting in the first family, aren't you redoing the first law at all?
We're not redoing, because this came, we, we've been running the. We're not redoing, because this came, we've, we've been running the daycare there ever since we bought the house.
I didn't know, since you constructed a new business. So what, what are you looking for?
Well, the thing is that we wanted to fix the basement. So when, um, the lady's name, I don't remember that, so when she came out, so she asked my wife, oh, you run the daycare? So my wife said, yes. So then she says, oh, do, do you have a license for it? And then she says, yes, I, I have a license for ten. And then on top of that, she, you know, and then she said, oh, you know, you need a permit, that's it.
You might combine your day.
Yeah.
You said you have.
We have the license from, from.
From the state.
From the state.
But you never got a permit to run a business?
No.
You just started from a five-day care.
Right, right.
Yeah, because the, but, but the thing is that when we started, we only had six. Because she started back in two thousand and five.
All right, all right. So.
So ever since we've been living there, then she applied for the ten. But we never knew that we needed to get a special permit.
Now, you have no permit to run your business, and you were doing the first law over?
No, no, we're not doing anything over.
It's just, you get the kitchen, you have the kitchen area, what are you doing?
No.
I think that's just the way. Yeah, but it looks like it's being, the way it was handled, I thought it was.
No. Because, because.
Yeah, I, huh, we're inside running out now. Well, when I get something like that, I think this is what you're doing inside your house.
No, 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 that, that's the way it is.
That's the way it is.
Yes.
Oh.
Because
That is.
Because, because the thing is that what we want to fix is the basement.
But this, this is like a layout for things you, we think.
Yeah, because that's, you know.
But you build up.
Huh?
You still.
Yeah, because that's what I thought I had to do.
I didn't. All right, so what you're looking for is to get a large daycare.
Yeah, because actually.
So what are you doing in the basement?
The basement, all I wanted to do is just fix it up, you know, put my washer and dryer downstairs.
So you just go get a permit. What would you get to do for your renovation?
Hmm?
You doing renovations on it?
Well, yeah, fix the basement up.
For walls and.
Yes, yes.
So you get out a full permit to do that.
Yeah, we, we.
Not here. You get out there and you pay for a permit, what you gonna do, what's gonna cost you to do it, they'll tell you all. Please tell them that's what you, this is what you're doing. Basement renovation.
Yeah, I think Kathy knew it was about for grid structure, that's when she realized it was a large family daycare. It was a small, and she told him to make it so.
Yeah.
All right, but now we want to do basement, we want to put a wall.
We'll get plans.
Okay. Get it? You have to come down and see the man?
Yeah, because we, I, I, because I think we asked a, a contractor to, to, to do the work. Because I, at first I was going to do it on myself, right, pull the permit and do, but it's too much. So then I got somebody. So he went and applied for the, for the permit, but they said that first we need to do the daycare permit.
Right, okay.
All right, let's take care of that.
Let's take care of that, all right. Everything's the way it is.
Yeah, it's, it, it, it's no new construction, no.
Anybody have any questions?
No, no. So we give them a special permit. But we expect now.
Right, right, right. And then he's gonna have to go through them again to get, to get it.
Yes.
And you're saying with your state licenses for large daycare?
Yes, because it's, it's basically just ten, because a, a home family daycare can run ten, that's it.
All right, I keep your weight.
Yes, uh, my name is, uh, Jamie, Jo, uh, I live thirty-six Grogan Avenue. So I'm running this daycare more than, uh, seventeen years. So the current, uh, address is we renting, so after when we bought this house, after we bought it, I already, already have the ten license, have my ten children. So to the say, my licensure, every year they come to, um, expect the house. So they approve for all this space to allow to do ten. So I don't know, we need to pull a special permit to do a large family daycare in Quincy. So they also, she talked to her, um, her manager, they say, oh, we will communication with the, the Quincy Hall. But we never get back from, uh, from, from, from my licensure. So by after that, we have to come to the hearing to pull this permit, but we don't know how the process going, so that's why we, um, need to know and how we can get this done.
We're gonna make a decision tonight. After that's done, if it goes well, go down and pull a permit to do the downstairs.
Thank you.
Have your contractor or yourself go down and pull.
Yeah, they were, they were already waiting for that.
Have your contractor make sure he's licensed and insured.
They are, they are, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Better forward, name and address for the record. One up next, you can be next.
Uh, good evening, I'm Patrick Alexis, seventy-two Stedman Street. Um, I've had the pleasure of having my two children in May and Louis's daycare, uh, for over eight years. Um, they're providing a great service for the community, affordable daycare. And to be able to leave your children with people all day and not worry about them is, um, I can't even describe it. I'm a little tired, a little nervous right now, so excuse me for that, but, um, I do love them a, a lot, and I wanted to show the support because they are really providing, um, a great service for, for Quincy. Uh, at the time when we were looking for family daycare, it's, it's a mess out there, you know, basements, um, areas you don't feel safe with, and, um, uh, May and Louis's, uh, daycare was just, is just a phenomenal place, and I wish I could leave my, my children there forever, to be, to be honest with you. Um, so I just wanted to, um, voice my support for them.
Henry Fox, who's hanging in here tonight, I know she, she thanked you very much.
Thank you, no problem, I'm, I'm happy to do it.
Thank you. Senior man, you're working?
My name is Christine Blonewa, I live and own twelve Harrison Street in Quincy. I also grew up at three fifty-five Adams Street in Quincy, which my parents, uh, still live and own. Um, and I want to apologize for me going in and out of the room. My dad is actually in the E R, uh, he is just finishing chemo, waiting for radio, uh, radiation. So I wanted to make sure I stayed here. My dad is okay for now, but I'm heading straight out there right after this. So, um, uh, so, um, again, my name is Christine Blonewa. I have my master's in regulatory affairs, I'm dental hygienist, but most importantly, I'm a mother of three. I met Louis in May, um, through our first son, who is now, uh, who is best friends, and they're both in high school right now. The oldest, who was here, was tired to seven o'clock, went home, asked for permission, mom, I want to sleep. He's sixteen years old and wants to sleep at seven P M. She raised him like that. She is also raising a lot of our children. We have other mothers, one who's pregnant, one who has two, whose children are outside. We stayed here throughout this entire time. Uh, my child, who is under May's care now, is my third child. I want to echo what this gentleman said. I did a paper, my thesis, on choosing daycares when I was with my first child. And I waited ten years to have my next child, and I knew exactly where I was going to choose. And the minute I found out I was pregnant, she was the third person I called. Just to make sure I had a spot in her daycare. Uh, my third child, Dylan, he has several allergies. May is accommodating to all of them. She cooks for her, she cooks for the children, granted, I am still, I was pumping, I provided everything. This is my third child, this is my first child, I'm sending to take, to have someone else outside my family take care. So it was a really hard decision for me to do this, and to hear that there was a risk to her daycare made me fall apart because I would not be able to send anyone, send him anywhere else. Um, so I hope that you do support this permit for her. Um, I know there's two other mothers who want to probably speak behind me, but not only did May get the trust of all the parents that, of all the kids that she takes care of, she also gets the love of the children that she takes care of. My son is gonna turn one month, I'm sorry, one year, October second. And already, he doesn't want to come to me, he wants to hold on to May. And every time I come to get him, no, he just goes right back to her, and to know that someone like May, I have to fight her for my own child, who I carried and got the C-section, it just, it's, it's a wonderful thing. Um, so, uh, sorry, this is taking too long. Um, the permit that they're asking for, I, um, I thought it was, uh, to have their basement done, or whichever the case, but that's next, um, but I hope, um, that you keep in mind that Louis and May's daycare give back to the city of Quincy and beyond in that they provide a safe space for parents to trust and leave their children to caregivers who genuinely care for our children. Uh, the permit that they're asking for is in regard to the basement, to renovate their basement, um, but it's for their family. They're taking care of other families as well, too, so that's why we're in support of both the permit for the daycare and the permit for the basement. Um, dear Chairman Atkins and the Quincy Zoning Board of Appeals, my family respectfully urges you to consider granting these special permits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else wants to speak in favor?
Hi, I'm Jan Morgan, I'm actually not from Quincy, I live in nine-nine-six Metropolitan in Milton. Um, I have a fifteen-month-year-old daughter that goes to May, and I just wanted to let you guys know that it's really hard to find daycare, it took me a long time to find her. Um, even if I go like a brick and mortar business, they put you on waitlist, they sometimes don't respond to you, they don't call you or respond to emails, so it's really hard to get a spot. Um, daycare's spot are very rare, I want to say, and hard to find. Um, and I'm also pregnant, and I'm already telling May that I want my baby to go to her, so I really need the spot. So I hope you guys would grant, um, her the permit, because it's really hard to find a daycare that's reliable, and you need to like, you know, trust them, and so you can go to work. And both me and my husband work, so we need daycare, so, thanks.
Thanks. Anyone else? Boy, oh my God.
Hey, you guys need a daycare? Um, Leah Baumforth, eighteen Garfield Street, um, I grew up in Quincy, snug harbor central Quincy. I, um, my parents still live here, I live here, my parents have been taking care of, um, my daughter for fourteen months. And I, right at that point is when I actually entered into May's daycare, and just by chance, because I, like, um, previous person, we were looking for daycares, centers, uh, home daycares, and it was very hard to get ahold of anyone. And I was looking during COVID, because I have a COVID baby. Um, and so, uh, she luckily called me back and said she had an opening, and I just lucked out. And I'm so lucky that the two of them are very caring people, they care for everyone, like they are family. Um, my daughter calls her May May, is, May May's the only one that can cut her nails and, you know, um, clean her earrings, take her earrings out, change it out. Um, and then when I got pregnant again, um, I wanted to make sure that May knew that I wanted the other one to be in there too, so it was in her ear. And she said, well, you know, my son's friend's mom is pregnant, and that was Christine, so I was like fighting for her. Um, and my daughter just, my youngest daughter just started on Monday. Um, so I'm very thankful, and I hope you guys, um, support her permit, because there's no one better.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else, last call? All of the time here in close. Huh? You want to talk to us? Wait, I'm not done, okay, I'm not done. Uh, any last one? D P W? D P W, when you're later here, we've reviewed this middle of the department project, have no comments. Uh, the fellow father is here, wait, I'm gonna put these, and these are letters of support, I'm not gonna read them all. I'm not sure. Uh, there's long letters all about your place and how soon you are, Sarah. And Kara. Me and Marla Belfort. And May and Bella. Pat Barango. Justin in the Marla Pusy. And Michelle. The last word. These are all big long words of support that they wrote for you. Uh, the fellow father here in close, is, is there anyone opposed on the side?
Opposed. What, can I sit here?
Sure, you can sit there, we'll, we'll listen, name and address for the.
Oh, Mary Grogan, thirty-two Grogan Avenue, Quincy.
Oh, I have your letter right here, let's not put it in, but we will, you don't have to put it in, because they're gonna.
Yeah, just that. Pursuant to section nine, four-two of the special permit regulation. Special permit may be only allowed in event there's not caused substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Addition of a large family daycare will adversely affect this residential area due to any traffic, popping and noise. In the immediate, my family, who has occupied the adjacent property for the past hundred years, hopes that Grogan have will be in the residential area. I'm particularly concerned with if the special permit is allowed for this large family daycare, other businesses may want to open in the residential neighborhood. Furthermore, the addition of four hundred and sixty-five apartments, up to the point five hundred and ninety apartments, to be completed in two thousand and twenty-three will add to the congestion to traffic on Quarry Street in the surrounding neighborhoods. Our street, Grogan Avenue, right off Quarry Street. And the first reasons, and secondly, request that the board, the gentleman, who is the man who got the patient for this special permit, thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, how long have you been at that avenue?
Since two thousand and seven.
It's already like sixteen years.
You've been at that business doing?
Yes, yes, doing the same thing.
Did you know that?
Yes, they.
Oh, I think that's.
If I may speak, I'm sorry, I have children, me, your own sister. Um, our family actually is, um, Grogan, so we're at Grogan, we grew up in Grogan, and our family, we saw Louis, our home. That, I know Louis very well.
Name is Free?
Yes, yeah, I agree, I've got to my grandfather, Stone Cutter, and, um, Mason was a farmer on the street, but in any case, um, we knew that they were running a daycare, which we never really objected to, but I've only got the zoning, um, letter, it's at a large family daycare, which we weren't sure what, that would be. Another, I think they have ten children in it, is that?
Yeah, there's maps.
Of the ten?
There's always.
Maps.
Okay. So we thought they were doing an expansion inside the house due to the plans that you had.
That's right, so. Do you think, that's what we thought.
Right.
So taking out things, putting in big rooms and.
Oh, yeah, that's what we, it was our history, and what I had, they were adding additional children, creating more congestion at the property, um, and where my sister lives, like, it's not a, we're very close. It's a very close.
Yeah, you are.
We grew up.
Right.
She lives in my grandfather's house right now, and they live in the house.
Is there any, any problems down there at all?
I don't think so. Yes, they have one problem, just the traffic. No, the problem with each other.
What?
Oh, traffic with it.
But what?
Well, yeah, I have to back down the driveway, and if there's cars on that side, it's like, just, it is a little difficult sometimes. But, um.
Where, where the people park?
Yeah.
To make you get in and out?
Sometimes, one time.
You can make sure that will never happen again, correct?
Yeah, but basically, most of the, most of the time, when the people come, it's only in the morning to drop off, and they're not there that long.
No, they're gonna pick up at night, right. Probably ten minutes, five minutes, but getting away out of your house, you get angry, you know what I mean? Just make sure they're parking.
Yeah.
What does large daycare mean?
Ten, ten maps.
Not more.
Ten.
Not anymore.
That's what they like.
Not more, we never said more.
You don't have any more.
Yeah.
That's what they have.
It's not, yeah, it wasn't clarified.
No, it wasn't, you're right.
Because they say.
And I was thinking the same thing, like, you're doing sixteen in, what are you saying?
Because of when we.
No, we got it in there.
When we see the mail, when we see the letter, and I say, why they say building, we already, we didn't even, when I talk to the lady, and then I say, I did.
We never gave you one, so we think they are building one, and you gave us our plans to put in the kitchen and.
No, because she tell.
I didn't know they were there, you say, system, same as first floor, this is it, we have this.
Because I tried to call the, the, I tried to call the commissioner.
Because I tried to call the, 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 I tried to call the commissioner, but it's, I live with so many time message.
I know, we got it.
And I thought you are so busy.
We figured it all up, you know.
That's why I wanna clear, clarify with all these problems, and before I come here, but.
Yeah. Are you all set?
Yeah.
Same.
Same.
Is there anyone else? Opposed on the side, I have a letter here.
On the side of the question mark.
Hey, man, one second, I can't read this anymore, we have a lot of them. I don't know what one of them was. Oh, that one's correct, yeah, right, right, so we don't have to pick that up. That's all, I, yeah, yeah, and I, and I have it here.
Yeah.
Uh, John Rutherford, sixty-two Groundwell Road, I mean, when I saw this on the agenda, I kinda figured that it was a daycare that was going on, someone complained about it, and they just, you know, the, I just want, you know, everyone to know that this is residential A, correct? And if you are a residential A, um, you need permission to run a business, and so, basically, the city basically is just is asking these people to ask to get permission. So now you can get permission, and you can legally do it, and so that's how the city works, so you're supposed to, this is just, so if anyone else, I mean, because it is really confusing. What are the rules on a daycare, like?
Sixteen years, you think.
Well, like, if I, if I wanna babysit, um, a hundred kids at my house, can I?
You can do anything.
You know what I'm saying, so I mean, it, it, it's almost like babysitting or taking care of o- other people's children is something that's needed within the community, so, um. Did you have something to say, sir?
Oh, I love listening to you.
Well, when I ask, like, where, well, I hear you muttering stuff a couple times, like, you're very disrespectful.
Hey, before you get any further, pal, slow down a little, will you?
Well, don't, don't be muttering stuff, I've seen you a couple times muttering at me, okay?
Let me finish, let me finish, I happen to have hearing aids in, I lost my hearing in the service, so if I have to lean forward, or I have to, cause I can't hear.
You're also snickering at me a couple times, I've seen you, I come to these meetings all the time, and I have the right to stand up here, and I have the right to make a statement.
You're not arguing with people, you're not.
I have it on video, the whole thing.
Okay, we got it, we got it.
The city is a joke.
Oh, no.
It is.
Why is it a joke, John? Is he getting way, he, oh.
No, I'm not way, but it's a joke, it really is.
Alright, further on to tonight, let's, uh, you have no one else to call our hearing clause? Uh, you wanna speak? Oh, okay, fine. One up, name and address.
No, you're working for. No, no, you're working for Fennel Street, right?
Yeah.
No, that's not that, we, we're on a daycare now.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I thought, yeah, I didn't. No, 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 no.
We're getting there.
No. We have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, regarding page number twenty-two dash sixty-six, Louis Cruz, for a special permit to construct a large family daycare on premises number thirty-six, Grogan Avenue, Quincy, and make a motion to grant a requested special permit.
Second.
On motion, in and all favor, alright, opposed, so move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, next to the agenda.
Yeah, excuse me, before I leave, but this, this permit, we have to, how are we going to get it?
Call, call special services, come on.
Oh, okay.
Just, you need a phone number, you can, whatever your phone number, I'll write it down, and which one of you have a phone? Jonathan, Jonathan, K S M F S D R twenty-two six, Jonathan Gorey and Gina Favada for a special permit to operate a short-term rental on premises one fifteen thousand. Yep, and they're, they're here. Fennel Street. Fennel, wow.
He didn't show.
Mine fell asleep.
Perfect, I can't choose it.
You're in.
He sat all night, I had to.
Uh, it's not him.
No, he's a call.
November fifteenth.
Does that mean, I'm all set?
They're all set for now, but they're gonna come back, we don't know when.
You know, I wanted to ask you, I, just a qu- a question, uh, they're applying for permit for tenants?
Short-term rental, what do you mean?
Short-term rental?
After they get, they fill out this, it's an extensive thing, you have to, you have to, you have to live in a home, you have to have all your electric tools after. You have to live there, and people come into your home and rent short-term rentals.
Well, the only reason I ask is, they've been doing this for the last fifteen years.
Exactly, we just changed the rules in Quincy, now you have to get permit, and we have to know.
Wonderful.
We send in the building department, the fire department, health department, everyone goes through your property, and looks at every minute, everything's gotta be out of the code.
Health department goes through it, the fire department goes through it, the, the inspection service goes through it, makes sure everything's up to code,
and you get to buy exits and all this stuff, so it's a basis for the people, but they make money.
So they, they, uh, they, they're coming up again, Fox?
Yeah, we don't, we're looking for a date now.
Okay, whenever I'll hear from.
October twenty-fifth, is that it? October twenty-fifth, how's that?
October twenty-fifth?
Yeah, don't forget.
Okay.
We'll write them a letter, is that tearing up, guys, I don't know what happened here.
Mr. Chairman. This is an E D, this is an S T I, right?
S T I, it's a short-term rental.
The chairman regarding S T I twenty-two dash six, Jonathan Gorey and Gina Favada for a special permit to operate a short-term rental on premises number one fifteen Fennel Street, I make a motion to reschedule a hearing for the twenty-fifth of October.
On motion, in and all favor, alright, opposed, so move. You know why they're doing that, so we can, we can keep track of how many are coming up in front of us now, I remember.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Six o'clock.
He walked out, I wanted to get him on tape.
No, he's, he, he said it on you.
Oh, he's gonna, that's what I want, thank you very much.
Alright, sorry about that.
You guys have a tough job.
Yeah. Good night, we're off quick, it's a month. S T I twenty-two seven, Yang Hong for a special permit to operate a short-term rental on the premises number thirty-seven Home Street in Quincy. Name and address for the record, please?
Um, good, good evening, members of the board, I am Nancy Zhang, I am the daughter of Yang Hong, the landlord and the red, and the resident of thirty-seven Home Street, I am her representative for her case. Since my mom's, her English is not very good, and she's also with me tonight, so she's there, um, I'm here in hopes for the board to approve our application for a short-term permit to rent out the extra guest rooms, that, because with the rooms, um, Vaskin and my brother and I are off to college, and like, when family mem- members didn't visit, my mom would like to rent out the extra rooms at short-term rental, and like, in order to not disturb or negative impact the neighbor, we will follow all the rules of the neighbor, such as regulate the noise, make sure the trash is being right, and the lawn. So we will make sure everything is.
Are you in two family?
Yes.
And, and you're gonna rent one of the apartments, or just the rooms in your apartment?
Yes, correct, the other, yes, the pe- the other, the other apartment is already rented out to another family.
So the short-term rental is gonna be in your?
Yes, correct.
Only like.
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I have no question.
No question, no question.
Parking?
Parking, so our house, we only have one car, so we only occupy one of the space, so our, um, property have like five parking spaces, so we have like three parking spaces available, the other rent, rent, rented, they don't have a car, they usually use the subway, the MBTA, to go to work and to go to places, so we only, right now, currently, only have one car in the property.
Would you park in one car and the other, or maybe two in a row, or how's it work?
So our, so one is in the side, so we park three in a row and one on the side, so we make sure that like they will have a space to move in and out. No problem.
Is there anyone that likes to speak in favor, back there, anybody, first, second, third, all that close? Anything from, uh, D K D L? We're reviewing the mail from above, right, and, and that will come.
By the time they hand it to you, it'll be over. So it's fucking, the little ones.
Thank you, thank you, we're half fifteen minutes of time.
Yeah, I've got that right. Okay, back, threaten me.
Is there anyone that, opposed on the side? First law, second law, third law, close. I have no question?
Nope, we're all set, ready. Mr. Chairman, regarding case S T, uh, twenty-two dash seven, Yang Hong, right?
Yang Hong.
For a special permit to operate a short-term rental on the premises number thirty-seven Home Street, I make a motion to gra- grant a special permit.
Thank you.
On motion, in and all favor, alright, opposed, so move.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
So.
And one more thing, guys, you're all set. Oh. I, I got a letter here, thirty-eight Homes. I got a letter here, thirty-eight Homes Street, they want a six-month extension on their, their building. Oh, got it, yeah, I got a six-month extension for thirty-eight Homes, and we make a motion for thirty-eight Homes for a six-month extension.
Mr. Chairman, regarding the E D R case twenty-one thirty-four, um, thirty-eight Homes Street, make a motion to grant a six-month extension, uh, to the existing, uh, rented firm.
Second.
On motion, in and all favor, alright, opposed, so move. That's what he, that's what he.
Most of them are.
Thirty-seven, and then you have a. Everyone's in favor?